Yes, so.
Yeah, I owe you one.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's St. Charles County Council meeting. We're calling this the Arena Tour. So it's the first time we've played in arena before, so be patient with us. We may be a little slow. We'll have T-shirts for sale a little bit later on in the lobby. You can pick those up. We know that there's a big crowd tonight, and we appreciate that, so we're going to be as patient with you as you will be with us. Hopefully, everybody gets a chance to voice your opinion at the end of the night that you feel like you've been heard. That's what we're here for tonight. So if you'll be patient with us, we will be patient with you, and we will get through this in a very orderly manner. We start off every meeting with praying and with pledging. Tonight, we are very lucky to have Reverend Debbie Bartley. She is from the First St. Charles United Methodist Church. Debbie is going to pray for us tonight. Councilman Mike Klinghammer is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask you right now if you would please stand and remove your caps.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come together this evening with much on our minds. We ask for your presence to be known during this evening's gathering. Many are here to offer their thoughts and their suggestions for the future of our county. May the conversations and decisions made tonight be made with careful and thoughtful discernment. Remind us that even in our disagreements, we must listen to each other and extend respect to everyone. Give to this council guidance and wisdom so that they can stand in the gap for those whose voices are weak. We pray for those who are hungry, who are fearful about finding shelter this winter, who seek employment, those without adequate health care, and for those who seek simply to be seen rather than ignored. We pray with thankful and grateful hearts for our county's first responders and employees who selflessly serve so that our basic needs and our safety are met. Send your blessings upon our county executive, the members of this council, and all those serving in St. Charles County's governance. May they continue to be instruments of hope and of peace for the people of St. Charles County, and it is with grateful hearts that we pray. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and honor.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander. Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Thank you. We'll start off this evening with a public presentation, and this is coming from our county executive, Mr. Steve Elman. I would tell you while he's on his way up, at the end of this is when we're going to have the conditional use permit. So if you want to start lining up, you can start lining up over there after he finishes speaking. I saw you, Scott. We're gonna... To be fair, though, we are in St. Charles, so we are going to give first rights to Mayor Faith if she wishes to speak first. Sorry, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, is that your way of telling me to hurry up and not be lengthy here?
It's not like I have a big comfy couch in Darden Prairie waiting for me or anything. So you go ahead.
I will nevertheless. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as you know, you're going to first read the budget tonight. I want to recognize my staff for the days and weeks and months that they spent putting that thing together. I want to thank you for the many, many, many hours you spent the last month or so going through it with us, line for line, and asking some very good questions and having your own input. As you all know, there's a lot of things that we would have liked to done and can't, a lot of things you would love to add and can't, because we're... Things are very, very tight, and I just want to go over again. I think you've heard all these things individually, but maybe never heard them all together. Some of the constraints that we have on our budgeting. Next slide, please. You know, there's a lot of talk in St. Louis County about the cost of government, and you can see Better Together did a... They did a study, and they found out in the city of St. Louis, the total cost of government is 2.6... Excuse me, $2,600-some dollars per person. St. Louis County, it's $1,000 less. Well, I'm proud to say that in St. Charles County, the total cost of government, that cities, counties, ambulance districts, fire districts, library district, everything, is $200 less than St. Louis County. Now, if you look at the percentage of increase from 2012 to 2015, you can see there that in St. Louis City and County, the cost of government went up 5.7 percent. At the same time, they lost over 8,000 residents. In St. Charles County, the cost of government went up 6.3 percent, but we gained 16,000 residents. I think that's a credit to all the political subdivisions in the county, but I particularly want to call your attention to St. Charles County government, whose budget you control. During that same period, the amount of money we spent went up 3.3 percent. At the same time, we gained all those residents. So the bottom line is, we're actually spending less per person on county government now than we did five years ago. Next slide, please. Some of our problems, some of the situations we have to deal with, unlike St. Louis County and a lot of the cities, we have no utility tax for the county. Unlike city of St. Louis, we have no earnings tax. And because the county has decided to not assess it or to charge it to the people, we have no general fund property tax, and that, of course, is going to be more of a problem as we go forward here. Next slide, please, because as you know, 61 percent of our budget is based on sales tax. Now, this is a graph showing the sales tax revenue growth, and if you see it, the original starts in 2007, goes down, comes back up. That reflects the Great Recession. We're used to that. When there's a recession, our sales tax not only doesn't grow, it's in the negative. And you can see, it went negative there for two or three years, then it came back up. But as you can see, in the last three years, in a time where we actually have had a good economy, our sales tax growth has gone down. We're getting less and less growth each year in 61 percent of our budget. As you all know, a lot of that is because people are not buying in our retail businesses here, but they're buying online. Okay? So that's a real challenge to us. I mentioned... Next slide, please. I mentioned the fact that we have not had any property tax in our general revenue for almost 20 years. You can see, and this is a tax that the people approved that we could have been assessing, and the councils have decided not to assess it. As a result, $34 million that could have been assessed has not been, and that's a good thing, and that's something I think all of us need to be proud of. But it also puts us in a situation where, as dependent as we are on the sales tax, we don't have any property tax coming in for general revenue. When people get that property tax bill from the county collector, most of it's going to the schools and other places, not to us. So again, I think most of you are aware of that. I hope that people are also aware of it. Next slide, please. Here's another problem with our budget. As most of you, I think, know, 911 has always been funded by a tax on telephone landlines. And I don't know how many people out here have a landline, but those who do are basically paying for 911, and those who don't are not. Because 911 is so important, we've put another $300,000 in the budget this year to supplement that funding source, which is just not producing. 1.24 million since 2014. Okay? And again, that's because nobody has a landline. This is something the legislature needs to look at, something they need to fix. We've been working with them the last couple of years. We want to make sure that when they fix it, they don't socialize the whole problem and have the people in counties like St. Charles paying for it throughout the state. But there needs to be a better way for us to pay for it here, and until we do, we're going to have to keep using our general fund to supplement that because it is so important. Next slide, please. Legislative earmarks, and this is something we'll be talking to the legislators about. The legislature has not only allowed us, it's basically required us to tax people and raise about $14 million, but at the same time, they've earmarked that money and said it only can be used for certain things. And since we don't need those certain things, we basically have that money sitting there. Again, we need to ask our legislators to look at that. Either we need the discretion to spend it where it's needed, or we just not need to not collect it. So it's $14 million. Next slide, Internet sales tax. There's been a lot of discussion about taxing Internet sales. We're not really getting into that discussion here, but as you know, there's been some Internet providers that have voluntarily been submitting the sales tax on their sales, and that's been good for us. We've collected about $600,000 since February. But if any of those providers actually build a warehouse somewhere, then they will establish the nexus for taxation. The sales tax will not come to the place where the people live and buy. It'll come from... It'll go to the place where the products are shipped from. Now, if that happens, that's going to be very significant for all county governments. It'll be great for us if we end up with a warehouse, but if we don't, it's going to be even another thing that's going to make it difficult for us to do that budget every year. Next slide, please. Tax abatements for developers. This year, we paid $856,000 in TIF payments on tax abatements that were approved by cities, but the cities were able to go ahead and abate our taxes. That situation, I think, is going to improve because we have a countywide TIF commission now. But another $282,000, Chapter 10353, by itself, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but when you add it to all these other things, it's yet another reason why it's so tough for us to do our budget. Next slide, please. The zoo. As you know, the zoo people were in Jefferson City the last two years. They came and talked to myself and to you two years ago, and they're asking for help in supporting the zoo. The legislature did not see fit to grant them that authorization, but because we knew that so many people in this county do really appreciate and use the zoo, we actually initiated a discussion with the zoo to see if they could possibly do some sort of satellite facility in St. Charles County for which we would use the tax revenue we're already collecting for our parks. As you know, they're not interested in doing that right now, but my point here on this slide is to show you the reason they are here is because the zoo is supported by property taxes in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County. In the city of St. Louis, you can see the funding has been flat for the last five or six years, and that is mainly because they've been granting these tax abatements to the new development. So because they're doing that, that's why the zoo has come to St. Charles and Franklin and Jefferson County wanting help. And my argument is, you know, if they were allowing the zoo to have the money they're legally entitled to before these tax abatements, they wouldn't be out here. But I just had to mention the fact that we are... We do care about the zoo, and we have tried to work with them on some things. Last slide, the gas tax. Now, this has nothing to do directly with county government. This is the state gas tax. In 2006, with the existing gas tax rate, MODOT collected 4.43 million. 10 years later, 3.94 million. And that's because the tax is based on so much per gallon. We've got more efficient cars, people are driving less, MODOT has less money. Now, what does that mean to our budget? That's why it was necessary for our county road board and for you all to approve about one-fourth of the cost of doing the Page Avenue extension. That's why you all have approved doing about one-fourth of the cost of the Highway P Piney Road intersection. Those are projects that MODOT should be doing on their own, but because they have this challenge, the only way we're going to get it done is to kick in and try to work with them on this. That's the last thing I had. Again, any single one of these things, we could deal with. The problem is, with all of them together, it makes a real challenge, and once again, I want to thank you for working with the administration on preparing this budget. Thank you.
With that, we will move on to conditional use permits and bills for introduction.
Read the bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Bill number 4540, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by John White, and ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 17-11 for a trash transfer station to Metrofill Development LLC property owner.
If you would like to start lining up to come speak, you can start doing that now, and you'll just bring your card around. What you'll do is you'll hand your card to the ladies here. They will swear you in one at a time at this table, and then you'll be able to come up and speak. We're going to hear from community development. We're going to hear from the applicant. Mayor, if you hang on for a second, once they finish, then we'll come over to you. Robert. Robert's ready to be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Robert Myers.
You can have a seat, Robert, if you want. The microphone will pick you up a lot better, I think, if you do. Can you pull that closer to you?
You bet.
Awesome. Thank you.
How's that? Is that better?
That's great.
Great.
I hear there's kind of a buzz going on that might interfere with the sound for people, so if you can speak into that, that'd be great.
You bet. My name is Robert Myers. I'm the Planning and Zoning Division Director for St. Charles County, and I'm here tonight to introduce this case to you, a conditional use permit for a trash transfer station. The applicants are Metrofill Development LLC, and the location is on South River Road at the southwest quadrant of Freedens Road and South River Road in unincorporated St. Charles County. And I should note that properties surrounding this particular property are all in the city of St. Charles. So if there's questions tonight about permits, for instance, about surrounding development, we may or may not be able to answer that. But we're here to talk about a specific use at a specific location, and I would note right off the bat that the application is for a trash transfer station and not for a sanitary landfill. I mention that because I've seen some photographs that have been emailed around showing a picture of a solid waste open landfill and saying we don't want this. But just for the record, we're talking about a building in which municipal waste is brought inside the building and then transferred to another vehicle, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight at this location. I also want to mention that there's three different approvals that any trash transfer station would need in order to operate, and this is one of those approvals. The first is zoning approval, which we're talking about tonight. The second is a public health approval, and the third is the State of Missouri Department of Natural Resources approval. All three of those, the way I understand it, require separate public hearings, and so this is just one public hearing of three. The zoning background, I'm not going to cover this in depth because there's a lot that's in your packet, but I would note quickly that the property where this is proposed is 27 acres of the entire tract, and it's all zoned for solid waste disposal district. And it's been zoned that way for a number of years, and on the site, there's a clean fill landfill that's been permitted by the county since 2003. What I mean by a clean fill landfill is they accept inert materials such as concrete, asphalt, rock, sand, et cetera. But again, it's not sanitary waste that's being deposited. Since 1973, three applications have been submitted to the county but denied to operate a sanitary landfill on this property in an old quarry that's been in operation since the 1930s, if not earlier. In 1990, St. Charles County did approve a sanitary landfill to be operated on this property. The applicant was the city of St. Peters, but ultimately, they were not able to take advantage or use that county approval because they never gained state approval. So I guess the bottom line is, no sanitary landfills operated on this site. And in fact, as part of previous approvals for the inert materials landfill, there's actually a deed restriction on the property that in perpetuity, there's no sanitary waste that can be deposited on the property. The land use context, again, it's covered much more in depth in your packet, but essentially, to the north, you find the River Crossing Apartments, single-family residential and a utility substation. To the east, you'll see the Katy Trail, which is the state park, Bangor Island County Park, and Kurt's Concrete, which is industrial. To the south, you'll find a landfill for inert material operated by the applicant, Metrofill LLC. And in the west, there's a single-family subdivision, the Enclave at Montclair. Also in your packet tonight, you have the solid waste disposal district standards, and these are standard conditions that every trash transfer station must comply with, including it must be operated within an enclosed building, no hazardous waste, it's got to be fenced to prevent escape of materials from the site, et cetera. So regardless of any approvals that might be had, all of those standards would need to be complied with in order to gain ultimate county approvals. The considerations that you have here tonight, there's a couple of different classes of considerations. You have conditional use permit standards, but first, I'm going to mention briefly some considerations that were discussed in detail at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. And these include traffic and roadway impacts, odor, and noise. And these are land use impacts that are of concern, obviously, to neighbors and adjoining property owners and have been addressed extensively at the public hearing, and also the applicants have submitted public testimony in this regard. The conditional use permit standards, for every conditional use permit, these include the questions of whether the conditional use will be injurious to the use enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, or will it substantially diminish or impair property values? Also, will the establishment of conditional use impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property? And third, will the conditional use be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, and the general welfare? At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the speakers in favor of this application were the applicants, and they had three speakers, I recall, in speaking in favor, in support. We had 24 speakers opposed. Letters on file, we have no letters on file in support, but as of the time of the creation of the packet, we had 274 letters of opposition for this application. After concluding the public hearing and discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission recommended that the county council deny the application, and the vote was zero in favor, nine for denial, and one abstention. So the options that you have before you, the county council may deny the application, approve the application as applied for, or approve it with conditions. And should you have an interest in approving it with conditions, you have some draft conditions in a report before you for your consideration and discussion. The recommended action, the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, they recommended denial of the application. The discussion that they held, the commissioners, before taking their vote, including information that the proposed use of this particular... At this particular location would be detrimental to the general welfare in the vicinity due to proximity of residences and nearby recreational activities. Also, the discussion included considerations that the proposed use would injure the use and enjoyment of residential and public open space uses in the immediate vicinity due to odor, noise, and trash, and finally, that the establishment would impede the development and improvement of surrounding properties, including adjoining and nearby residential uses. And with that, county staff concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for denial.
Does anyone have any questions for Robert at this time? Seeing none, I would ask you to introduce the applicant.
Sure. You bet. Tonight, the applicants are here in the front row, and actually, the applicants' representatives, I should say. The applicants are Metrofill LLC, the property owners, and so tonight, we have Derek Stanley, we have Ed Shepherd, and we have Steve Martin. And I'm not sure who is... Will be speaking tonight, but... Okay. Great. Thank you.
Steve, if you want to come up, she'll swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, all. To address some of the concerns that came out through planning and zoning, we prepared a frequently asked question summary that we've submitted to the staff, copied for all of you. We've also prepared a list of suggestions and some exhibits attached to that that we submitted to the staff, one for all of you. And I believe that Mr. Myers has adequately summarized many of the things that have already occurred, so I'm going to try and re-brief myself and not repeat some of the things he said. I do want to point out that he referenced the solid waste district standards. The application that's been submitted meets and exceeds every standard in the county requirement for a solid waste district. One of the issues that we've had come up here, and we've heard on different occasions, is the concept of smell or odor. We want to point out that this property, where the facility be located, is 60 feet below the closest subdivision, and the prevailing wind is away from the subdivision. And we've submitted the documents for that as part of that packet that we've given to you.
Hang on, hang on. Now, we all had to watch the planning and zoning video of what happened at planning and zoning, so we're all familiar what happened at planning and zoning. So do me a favor, will you? Keep the roar. I know how you feel. We've all gotten your letters and emails. So... And we all watched planning and zoning. So do me a favor. Chill out on everything right now. Everybody's going to get a chance to speak. So if he says something you disagree with, you don't have to moan. I get it. Let him make his point, please, and we will ask him to do the same for you. Fair enough? Fair enough? Thank you all.
Okay. And to continue with our concept, I note that the staff did their own smell, downwind smell test, and they went to other facilities to do that. We want to point out that we're not sure that that is an adequate test for what's occurring here, because, for example, the St. Peters facility is a transfer station, but it's also a materials recovery facility. It's also a compost facility. They keep material on site for weeks and months as they compost and treat things. It's a different concept than what's being proposed here. This is a facility that by law has to transfer everything within 24 hours. So from the time it leaves someone's trash can in their kitchen, and it's put on the truck that day, the next day, it'll be out of there. It'll go to this facility and be gone the very next day. So it's not going to have the... We're not going to have the issues that we see in the types of facilities that they were going to where, for example, they're composting material. There were issues that were pointed out in the staff's report that we agree with. They indicated there might be concerns for truck traffic. There might be concerns for noise, for air emissions, for litter, rodents and burns, excuse me, birds. But if you read the staff report, they do point out that these can be addressed by the way the facility is managed. And we do want to point out to you that Chapter 260 of the state statutes deal with how this facility is to be managed. The Code of State Regulations has requirements for how this facility is to be managed, and you heard Mr. Myers comment that there are three levels they have to go through to continue to operate this. If this facility doesn't meet those requirements, if they're not turning that waste around in 24 hours, if they are not diligent in protecting the environment with this facility, they'll lose those permits. They will be penalized for it. So I want to make clear that while the So I want to make clear that while the staff recommended almost all concerns could be recommend, could be addressed by how it's managed, we have to keep in mind the state highly regulates these and controls how they are managed as well. I think Mr. Myers was correct. The solid waste disposal district standards, they're listed in the county ordinance, and we're meeting every one of those. One of the issues that has come out of the planning and zoning is whether or not this is in the floodplain. I tell you, it is not. Okay? And we've actually submitted the figures to you. We provided, the floodplain level in 1993 was 459 feet. The elevation of the applicant's property, which we've given to you, is 470 feet. Well, the part where this facility be located is well above the floodplain. Between our property and the river is the Arena Parkway, which has been rebuilt at 460 feet above the previous flood level. And it was built for that purpose, to make sure that that road stayed out of the waterway. And we even have submitted the minutes of some of our opposition where they recognized in their minutes that this property is not in the floodplain, and has never had water on the location where this facility is going to be located. Having said that, I want to point out that the, that this application is consistent with your master plan. And the other uses, you've heard the other uses are concrete and landfill, et cetera, that adjoin it. Okay? That is correct. And this is consistent with those uses and is consistent with the master plan as you've already set it out by pre-existing regulations. There's been some comment about valuations, but we've seen no hard evidence of effective valuations. I do want to remind everybody that this property was previously zoned and previously permitted for a landfill. This property, and as Mr. Myers pointed out, it was only because the state denied them their application didn't go into place. This property since 1999 has been zoned as a solid waste district long before the adjoining facilities were built. And it has not impeded the development of any of the areas around by the fact it's had that zoning, and this is the only location within St. Charles County, uncorporate county, that would permit such a facility. And I promise to be brief. In short, in 1999, this county government made a determination that that property would be converted to a sanitary landfill district, disposal district. All right? The applicant's property can only be used for that purpose. It's the only location that you have in the uncorporate county that would permit such an operation. And denying the current application, of course, would deny all use of this property of the location that we have submitted to you. We respectfully request that you approve the application tonight, and I will point out that the recommendation for denial from the county staff included additional conditions that if you were willing to approve this, they wanted to impose additional conditions. We've submitted to you, and I state to you tonight that we will comply with those additional conditions. We have every expectation of doing that. And we can meet those and meet the concerns that staff had imposed as additional conditions. In that regard, we do ask for your approval. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for the applicant?
Not at this moment.
Not at this moment. Does anyone on the council have any questions for the applicant or for planning and zoning at this time? Seeing none, then we will move forward with our speakers. So as we open this up for public comment, any individual supporting or opposing the application is invited to share their comments with the council. We ask that you line up behind the roped off area with the speaker card in your hand. You'll hand the card to the clerk. You will then be sworn in at that point, and you will proceed with your comments. Upon the conclusion of the individual comments, please remain at the podium for any follow-up questions from the council, from the staff, or the applicant may have of you. We encourage you to keep your comments brief. Should another speaker share the same information that you already feel free, that you feel is the same, feel free to say ditto. The record will reflect that you share that opinion. Everybody clear? Awesome. We start off with the lady who was just highlighted worldwide by having the President of the United States join her, Mayor Sally Faith. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank the council members, County Executive Steve Elman, and I'd like to thank you for putting this here in the family arena. And I think everybody agrees, so...
Excuse me, I need to swear her in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you swore her in already.
Oh, you didn't swear. I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, that's all right.
Let's start this over again.
Let's start this over. All right.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. All right.
State your name.
And thank you, ditto. All right. First of all, and this is a very important issue, and I will be brief because I know there's a lot of people that want to talk, but what I would like to respectfully ask is for this council to deny this applicant. And my reasoning is, one, roads, two, smells, and three, the specific location is not acceptable. And with that, I close my statement.
Does anyone have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you for speaking.
Thank you, sir.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name.
Bob Schnur. And for the record, I am a county employee, but I am speaking here tonight solely in my role as the manager of the family arena. So welcome to the family arena tonight.
Hey, thanks for having us.
Family arena, as you know, is a stone's throw from the proposed site, and we are very concerned about that and the prospect of this facility being less than a quarter mile from this building we're sitting in right now. One of the reasons for that is the fact that although the issue of smell is discounted by some, we know the trash smells. And I don't know about you, but trash sits in my trash can at home for almost a week before it gets picked up. So 24-hour rule, not necessarily the case. We're concerned here at the family arena primarily because we're on a forced air system here, as we heard tonight with the baffles banging out in the backside of the building there. And when, especially in the wintertime, when concerts are high in season for us, we have forced air system that pulls from the outside air. And prevailing north winds, talked about prevailing winds a little while ago, when prevailing winds are blowing in your direction, it's a bad deal. So we don't want any odor coming into this building. We're very concerned about that. When the winds are blowing the other way, everything due north and a little bit west of the proposed site is going to be in the line of fire. And prevailing winds are only good as long as they're blowing away from you. And we know the wind doesn't blow the same direction all the time, so we are very concerned about that. There is a guide that I came across. It's the EPA Guide for Transfer Stations. It's a 66-page publication that talks about what you do and what you don't do with a transfer station, and there are some 14 different topics that you discuss and consider. And just a couple of the major ones, is one of the chief items of that is the close proximity of residential housing to the proposed site. And we know that directly across Freedens Road, we have a new apartment complex with 13 apartment buildings and 294 apartment units. And we have the subdivision up on the bluff, very close proximity to this site. So virtually, the entire northern exposure, slightly western exposure of this facility is residential area. We're concerned about noise. We're concerned about the traffic, trucks that come to this location. There will be many, many trucks on any given day coming to this site and leaving this site. The road infrastructure to and from, and what we heard from the applicant is that the primary route will be down Arena Parkway. The toll on the road infrastructure by that many trucks, that, those larger trucks on a constant basis means somewhere down the line, we got a road project out here prematurely. I'll finish up primarily with the bottom line of this, and it really comes down to whatever code was enacted when Sally and I were talking over there a minute ago about the fact, gee, we may have been on the council when this thing was, was zoned the way it is. A zoning decision has to be considered at the time and place that that proposition or that proposal is being proposed. May have been okay in 1999, but we're in 2017 now, and with everything that's gone on in the immediate area, this is a different area than it was then, and this frankly is a bad decision for the neighbors of the proposed site. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schnur. Hey, Bob. Hang on for a second. So does anyone on the council have a question? Hang on. Planning and zoning have a question? Does the applicant have a question of the speaker? You're good? We're good. Thank you, sir. All right, Scott.
She's already sworn me in.
Oh, there you go. Working ahead. Thank you. Would you state your name and address where you're at?
My name is Scott Stork. I live at 1084 Pier Point Lane in the Talbridge subdivision here in St. Charles. I also am a business owner here in St. Charles. So first of all, as you can see, we have a mobilized populace. I would venture to guess that most everybody here is here for this issue. And we heard Steve Martin speak, and as a fellow attorney, I have a lot of respect for Steve, but he's dead wrong on this issue. As he probably knows, there is a saying in the law that we have slippery slopes. And while we've seen a solid waste facility or disposal facility take place in this, in this area, now we're looking at a trash transfer station. Whether there's deed restrictions or not, there are ways to get around that. And what's to stop us, if this does get approved, from moving on to an actual regular landfill facility? And that is a concern. That's very much a concern of the residents in the area. Now, there are a lot of areas that might be suitable for this. This is not one. This is a residential area. This is a very heavily populated residential area. And Steve Elman gave a very good presentation regarding the budget challenges that we have. We have houses and subdivisions in this area within a mile that are quite significant value, especially for St. Charles County. Just a small amount of decrease in the valuation of those houses and of these areas could result in lower taxes because we're going to have a lower property tax base. I don't know that we want to take that chance to put a trash transfer station in this area. It also impedes the development that we could have in this area that's been talked about for years. There's been talk about a development between the family arena and what is now the streets of St. Charles. The city has talked about doing a large Marina development and putting a station like this and putting a landfill facility like this, and whether they want to use semantics and say it's not a landfill facility, that's basically what it is. We're taking away the ability to redevelop this in the way that it could be, let alone taking away the enjoyment that thousands of people a day, including myself, get from being on the Katy Trail. My other major concern is the traffic. And they can point to a low amount of traffic, but what they don't talk about is that we're talking about semi-trailers and garbage trucks and other large vehicles that are going to take up what is this river road area out here, this Arena Parkway area, that is very heavily traveled by my family included. And I really am afraid of what the ramifications are if you put that kind of traffic on a road like this during rush hour, which judging by the operating hours that they've set out is a definite concern. So I'm going to ask that you deny this application. It's the wrong location. It's the wrong type of facility. We don't need it here. As Councilman Klinghammer said at the planning and zoning meeting, these are necessary, but it's not necessary here. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, hang on. Any questions for this speaker?
You said there's other locations that would be better for this. Interprised, what locations are you speaking of?
It's not my job to find the location, but I think any location that does not have residential housing of the density that's here, if you look up and drive up Freedens Road, you're talking about a very dense population. There are rural areas, there's industrial areas in St. Charles County. All of them would be far superior to this for the type of facility that they're talking about.
Thank you.
Does staff or the applicant have a question for this speaker? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. So Larry, you've been sworn in? Excellent. State your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Larry Dabrowski. My address is 2362 Spring Mill Estates. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Elman, city staff, or I'm sorry, county staff, used to city staff.
Some habits are hard to break, aren't they?
Yeah.
Hey, we're in your city, brother, so thanks for having us.
As you know, my name is Larry Dabrowski. I'm the city administrator for the City of St. Charles. With all respect, I'd like to address three areas of concern. One is a procedural process. Second is health and safety. And third is economic development, which is going to tie in nicely to the speaker in front of us. So the owner's application, as I understand it, states, "Is the intention of the facility owner to connect to the public utilities, including but not limited to water, sewer, electric and telephone. These utilities readily available along Arena Parkway and so on and so forth." I bring that up because the City of St. Charles City Ordinance states that connections with property lying outside the city, Section G says all connections into the sanitary sewer, and there's another code that says the water system, whether made directly or indirectly of the property located outside the city limits, shall be made in accordance with the following provision. The owner of the land shall submit a petition for annexation of the land into the City of St. Charles. So my question really is, are they circumventing the system? Because if they're looking for utilities and they're truly indicating that they're going to hook to the City of St. Charles utilities, then they should be petitioning the City of St. Charles instead of you all. And so my question is, should it even be heard in front of you today? My second concern is, in their application, it states, "In the event that the City of St. Charles will not allow the use of water or sewer system, the facility will install portable water holding tanks and wastewater holding tanks on site. These tanks will be serviced on a regular basis." So I want to break those two apart separately. So on the water side, so the facility would be a large facility, would have sprinkler systems for fire, fire safety. In order to meet that fire demand, that would be a large water tank. Their daily demand for the water would be minimal, and so you can confirm with your staff, what will happen is that large tank will have water, they'll sit there, and it will become stagnant. The problem, when water becomes stagnant, it creates contaminants such as E. coli and other things. When E. coli and other contaminants come into water, when you use it, it spreads in the air or on the ground or whatever. It becomes unsafe, and people either get sick or potentially have the, have the ability or the potential to, to die from that. So the water tank is an unsafe and unhealthy option. Now, let's go to the wastewater side. In addition to all these large trucks that are going to be driving up and down all these roads, now you've got, they're going to service, they're going to have a wastewater tank there. And they're going to service that. So now you've got large trash transfer trucks, you've got diesel trucks, you've got portable water trucks that are delivering water, and now you've got trucks hauling wastewater off a site. I don't know if that's really an acceptable option. The last, the last item that I'd like to, and piggyback off the gentleman's statement is, is the county and the city have been working on Bangor Island. And we've got this property that's a recreational facility that's over by the streets of St. Charles. And the Bangor Island is an economic development engine that will go about from the streets of St. Charles to almost where we're at today. And so when I think about that, and just recently, I went to the City of St., I'm sorry, to San Antonio, and went to the Riverwalk for the first time, and I thought about this. 30 years ago, if they'd have put a transfer station in the middle, middle of the Riverwalk, what would be, what would it be today? It surely wouldn't be where, what it is today. And so by putting a transfer station in the middle of a mixed-use development that's going to have commercial and retail and all other viable economic drivers, that's not only going to affect the City of St. Charles, but it'll affect the county's tax, which will affect the way that we provide services in the future. So my question today is, for consideration, procedurally, are they circumventing the City of St. Charles to move forward on something that they shouldn't? I have concerns about health and safety, and I have some major concerns about the long-term viability of the economic development. So on behalf of the City of St. Charles, the residents and business owners, we do not support this.
Any questions from council, staff or the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Next speaker, please. Have you already been sworn in?
Yes.
Excellent. Your name is?
My name is Vince Ratchford, and I represent the citizens, citizens of Ward III on City Council, City of St. Charles. I urge you to deny the conditional use permit requested for a waste transfer station at Freedens and South River Road for the following reasons. First, property values. First, property values. Facilities like this are better suited for industrial areas, not residential. A 2006 study that I submitted to staff showed a reduction in residential property values for homes within 1.7 miles of such facilities. These homes lost 9% of their value, while those 1.7 miles away lost up to 0.8% of their value. There are 350 residences within that one-quarter mile, and a 2010 census data showed 63,000 residents within one mile of that site. Next, I'd like to speak on traffic safety. With 125 incoming trucks and 40 outgoing trucks per day, that's 330 large trucks per day. This will cause issues for school buses, children at bus stops, Katy Trail users, and everyday commuters. My third point is that the council and the residents need to know and have proof of responsible operation and maintenance of facilities currently operated by the proposed operator. This has not been submitted. Fourth, the negative impact on existing businesses, which has already been discussed, so ditto on that.
Thank you.
Fifth, as Mr. Dubrowski said, the negative impact on future economic development, such as the Bangor Island development between the Blanchett Bridge and the Family Arena, will not be good for our community.
Any questions from council staff or the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Bennett, have you been sworn in?
Been sworn in.
Been sworn in. Yes, I'm sure you have. Thank you.
The night is young.
Your name is?
John Bennett. I live at 1736 Lynn Cove Lane, St. Charles. So, first, I want to thank each of you, gentlemen and ladies, for being here this evening. I know that serving in the public government is not always the best of opportunities, but I know each and every one of you personally and politically, you all know me, and you know that I don't come before you lightly, although I think I might need to speak up with the storm that hit. So, thank you all for the job that you do. I don't have to point out the irony of you all holding this meeting here. As I understand it, it's the very first time that the council's ever had to have a meeting at this location. I also understand that the council has never overridden the Planning and Zoning Commission on a unanimous decision. So, I'm hoping that we will be able to move forward. I know you've all seen the P&amp;Z meeting, and we can move from here. Nothing brings a community together like trash. There's no question about it. We fought this battle. My family, my mother was the head of a committee, aptly named the Stop the Dump Committee. Thirty years ago, we were fighting against a landfill proposal, and we actually listened to the mayor of St. Peters at the time make the declaration that his office was in Bridston, and he drove past the landfill in there every day, and he never smelled anything. So, when we start talking about smells and how things aren't going to smell, we've heard this before, and we all have the sense of reality. All of us have driven down the road behind a trash truck at one time or another, and those are the very ones that would be coming to this facility. I want to address just a couple of things. The flooding aspect has come into play again. I also respect Mr. Martin. We've known each other for a long, long time. But in the flood of 93, the Monarch Levy burst in Jesterfield, which flooded that whole valley, as we all are aware. Had that not flooded, we would be underwater in where we are standing right now. There's no way that we can consider floodplain maps that don't take that into consideration. And while he argues that the facility would be out of the floodplain, access to the facility would be very difficult if we had, when we have, another flood of that magnitude. We can assume that with the rebuilding of the Monarch Levy, that it's probably not going to breach like it did in 1993. I do want to also walk you into my old neighborhood. Dad still lives up the street. Mom unfortunately passed about five years ago. But I used to walk to work here when I was a teenager. And this is a facility that was not here at the time. I celebrated it when I had the opportunity to represent the people in the Missouri House of Representatives, and I couldn't be more excited about the plans to develop the area between here and the bridge. I think the City of St. Charles, after long last, hit a grand slam with the streets of St. Charles. And seeing that they want to do that type of facility in this area in my old neighborhood is exciting to me. And I hope that such a facility across the street from here won't become a detriment for something like that. So, I'll leave you with the fact that you all know that one of the most important roles of government is to protect its citizens. We're asking you to protect us this evening. We're asking you to put the final nail in the coffin of discussions of trash here at this site. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So, Mr. Brazel brings up the point of, I said it earlier tonight, but I'll remind you again, we will not be voting on this issue tonight, just so everybody's clear. We'll talk about that process a little bit more, but he just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut into your time. Have you been sworn in?
I have, yeah.
Excellent. And your name is?
My name is Court Schneider. I personally live within a quarter mile of the proposed conditional use, and I have for 37 years. And while I don't want this in my backyard either, my opposition is actually coming from my family's 50 years in the residential real estate sales business here in St. Charles County. And with that, I feel like I have a pretty good pulse on what impacts property values in our community, and I have no doubt that this proposal will negatively impact, forever dampen, the appeal of property values in these surrounding areas. At, like Vince quoted, even a 10% reduction in value, the loss in home values that would cost homeowners in our community approximately $15 million right off the bat. Additionally, there will be a financial impact on the county's tax revenues, which has been referenced before as well. There has been and continues to be new residential, commercial development in the surrounding areas, which would all, I believe, be greatly and negatively impacted, one of those being the streets of St. Charles. We've got Montclair, Talbridge, not to mention the casino, Main Street, the Family Arena, Webster Park right across the street. It seems to me the negatives far outweigh the positives for the citizens and for our community. I understand the need for such proposal, but feel there's got to be a much better location that could be taken into consideration. So, I am very much opposed to this proposal, and I ask for your consideration in denying it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions from staff or the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, Court. Next speaker. Have you already been sworn in, sir? Thank you. And your name is?
My name's Robert Kelly. I live in Whispering Oaks, which is about two blocks down the road. The only access from our subdivision of 50 units is onto Arena Parkway. So, the traffic's a big concern for us, but ditto on that one. A few other things I'd like to mention. I'm one of those terrible people that ride bicycles on Sunday on Arena Parkway, so I'm very aware of the wear and tear that happens during the week. And I can tell you not a week goes by that there's not new potholes opened up from existing traffic, and so it's only going to get worse with additional traffic. Also, in our subdivision, we have a small pool, and we volunteer to take care of it on a weekly basis. One of the things I've noticed is that the diesel pollution leaves a black film that gathers on the skimmer. Monday through Friday, it's heavy. Saturdays and Sundays, not so bad. Scientific tests, not really, but an observation. A few other things in the planning and zoning, and by the way, I'd like to thank Planning and Zoning for dealing with a difficult environment and scenario a couple weeks back. But in the planning and zoning, mention was made that, hey, if trash comes off the truck, we'll be cleaning it up. And there's regulations that require things to be done a certain way. Well, I'm going to use the quarry next door as an example. They clean up. They run a street sweeper on there to clean up the dirt. But what happens is if you come by right after the street sweeper, you get mud all over your car. And if you come by after that's dried, you raise a cloud of dust. So, the best intentions don't necessarily guarantee results. The same way, there's a lot of trucks coming in and out with gravel. And again, I know that's not going to be the trash transfer facility, but I believe they're required by regulation to keep that covered, to keep things from coming off. Well, I can guarantee you, there's always piles of gravel, especially at the turns onto the Page Avenue Extension or 364. And so, yes, the intention is that it's going to work. The regulation's probably that it's going to work, but the reality is that it doesn't. And so, just, I know those are small items, but I think it's one of those things to take into consideration. And I thank you for an opportunity to speak, and I recommend denial of this conditional use permit.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions from the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Have you already been sworn in, ma'am? Excellent. And your name is?
Barbara Ann Hampton. You can call me Babs.
Okay, Babs, where do you live?
I'm the secretary for the Board of the Wheeler Canyon Estates Subdivision. We are located 1.5 miles from the Family Arena via the Katy Trail and two miles via Upper Bottom Road. I represent 79 homeowners, taxpayers, and, most importantly, voters. I'm up here to talk about something that's sort of a little bit forgotten, and that is all of God's creatures. I spoke at the planning and zoning. If you go down the road now, you'll see that one or two poor possums or raccoons are laying in the road, their carcasses. We don't clean it up, but their bodies lay there, they decay there and everything. And that's just with the amount of traffic going to 364. Now, the Division of Health serves, it works in cooperation with a variety of agencies to improve the well-being of St. Charles residents each year. Please address this public health issue of emissions as well, not only the God's creatures, but the emissions as well. I attended that meeting. The gentleman's inability to articulate his response when answering questions from the zoning board cannot be excused. Please review the tape and note, his generalities are not acceptable. And with this, it did not pass the planning and zoning. It didn't, the county staff recommends you deny. And please know, if you were to take a hand vote right now, I'm sure all of these, my fellow neighbors, would raise and say, please, do not do this to our homes, do not do it to our neighbors, do not do it to our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Babs. Yes, sir. Have you been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And your name is?
Good evening. Roger Bernhardt. I live at 17 Orchard Lane, approximately three-quarters a mile north.
Hi, Roger.
Appreciate your services, all of you. I would like to comment on the follow-up to the sewer and water connections. As stated by one of the gentlemen previous, the compliance with the rules does not protect against rain runoff into the quarry area. The compliance does not give good confidence to the citizens that follow-up will be taken when an organization might go out of compliance. You can't predict the future of their financial well-being, and their statements of compliance don't guarantee the health and safety of the community. I even have a suggestion. I think with the buildup that's going on in this area, an alternative use might be something like a water park at this facility. I think we can do something positive. We don't have to do something negative. Let's please rezone accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Brazel has a question for staff.
On the runoff issue?
Yes. It should be, it should be on, yes.
Runoff.
On the runoff. What is, what is, he was saying there's no compliance on that. What, tell me, explain to me the runoff, if, what trucks, with the soot and the slop and all the goo and stuff. If it's pulling up on the concrete and there's rain and thunderstorms, where's the runoff go? Where's all that trash water go?
Well, drainage ultimately drains to the, I guess that would be to the southeast and then underneath South River Road.
So, it drains on the surface, is what you're saying? There's no plan for contaminated spoils, so to speak?
No, they'd have to capture stormwater, and I'm sure as part of that, there would have to be accommodations for stormwater quality as well. But I don't have details on it at this time. The details typically come at the time of site plan review, which is towards the end of the process. But I can say county standards do require what quantity be dealt with in terms of stormwater, and then also quantity, I believe, in this situation will be addressed as well from surface runoff. Additionally, the building, inside the building, there will be drain inside the building, and that will have to either be the liquid that comes off trash stored indoors for that brief, for that 24-hour period, that would either have to be disposed of properly in a sewage treatment facility lines or captured and removed, captured in a tank and removed periodically, one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Did the applicant, sorry, sir, can you hang on for just a second? Let me, let the applicant speak. Come on up, sir. State your name, please.
Derek Standley.
Yes, sir.
Just as a note, this is another one of those things, that there is a separate permit that is required for stormwater control. It's an NPDS permit issued by the state of Missouri. And the leachate is the liquid that, any liquid that may come out of the waste, that happens inside of the building, that is treated in the sewer system. The stormwater, there are two stormwater ponds proposed on this site that would handle the clean stormwater, so.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt your time. Have you been sworn in, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, I have.
And your name is?
My name is Bob Barks. I live at 1772 Chandler, which is less than a mile from here.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to start out and congratulate these swell people, our honorable board that has made St. Charles County as beautiful as it is. And I really, I mean it from my heart, and I think all these people will give you a round of applause maybe for that. This is our home. This is our home. I think what these gentlemen are trying to do, I understand business. I've got a business in Newtown. I've been in business 45 years myself. You know, trash, what do you call it? Trash what? You know, here's the proper word. It's a garbage dump. That's how I grew up. It's a garbage dump. And there is no good smelling garbage dump, no clean garbage dump that I know of in the state of Missouri. Now, I didn't go very far out of Missouri, but I've never seen one of them. I believe this is the same conversation that was had maybe 15, 20 years ago because I really don't follow government a whole lot, but I do when it decides it's going to drop the price of my home. But over in Bridston, Maryland Heights, I know people with businesses over there, especially taverns. I like to visit a tavern. And so, so bad over there, you couldn't go in and get a cold glass of beer. Now, these guys are going to say, boy, we're going to do this, and there's going to be no smell. I'm going to tell you exactly why they're here, okay? Now, this is my opinion. My opinion is that that big hole we got over here, called a quarry, I believe, at one time, is a giant concrete hole to put trash in, which is garbage. And I will detest, I will, I would argue with any scientist, if you fill it up with garbage, not a trash transfer, isn't that just putting a sugar-coated name on something we know is a garbage dump? We want to destroy our property value. All I can say to these fine people behind me, and I mean this from my heart, if this thing comes in, and I have no control, you gentlemen run this county and do a damn good job of it. But if this comes in, I'm moving. I'm moving my business and everything out of this county. This is going to destroy our neighborhood, gentlemen. Don't let it happen. You're the power. You're who we've owed for. You're the people we appointed. Do your job. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Bob. Does anyone have any questions? Staff? Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Can I assume you've already been sworn in, sir? Excellent. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Barry Wilson. I live at 448 Old Court Road. It's on the, I cling to the bluffs overlooking the quarry.
Yes, sir.
About a month ago, I've sent a letter to each of you. It's probably lost and among the 200 other letters. And I ditto all the other reasons spoken tonight for opposing this proposal, but I wanted to speak on something a little bit different tonight, that'd be public health. And earlier, somebody spoke about the creatures of God and the possums that are roadkill and so forth. And in the letter... and so forth, and in the letter, I propose mosquitoes, rats, and other vermin like that as going to be populating around this trash transfer site, but tonight, I'd really like to focus the attention to something very simple, the fly. In the scientific community, the, uh, the professors and the researchers at Penn State University are the experts on the spread of diseases because of flies, and up until recently, they found 65 diseases that are spread by flies, some of them fatal diseases. Not all of them would thrive around St. Charles, because it's not a real temperate climate, but other diseases would be fatal and would be spread by flies, and flies and garbage are quite common. Now, two weeks ago, the researchers at Penn State, along with, in conjunction with researchers at Rio de Janeiro in Singapore, did another study, and they did DNA analysis on the diseases spread from flies, and found another 100 additional diseases and subspecies of microbes that are spread from flies. So, to try to summarize, I'm sure that you, as the council, will do, will look in the best interest of all of the citizens and vote no against this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir, we appreciate your time. Next speaker, please. Have you been sworn in, sir?
Yes.
Excellent. State your name, please.
My name is David Keiman, and I live at 14 Tristan Terrace, which is in the subdivision called La Chambres Montclair.
Yes, sir.
We're behind the enclaves of Montclair. Um, I'm gonna take another viewpoint of why I'm against it. I'm against it because of the volume of trash, trash being transferred. Nobody seems to talk about that. My subdivision, I believe, has 119 homes. I believe, uh, they're proposing transferring, uh, 2 million pounds of trash today. I made the assumption, if I put out two trash containers, I have 50 pounds of trash in each, for my subdivision, it has 119 homes, that would come out to every day, we would have to put out 335 trash containers every day of the week. That's a lot of trash. I don't wanna smell it. It was bad enough when I bought my house out here that I had to concede there was a quarry, but I think my house was here before a trash transfer site. If I had known there was gonna be a trash transfer site, I would never have built my house. So just take into account all the volume of trash that they're gonna be processing every day. I don't want that in my subdivision, okay?
Thank you. Any questions for this speaker? Thank you, sir, I think we're good. Yes, ma'am, have you been sworn in? Excellent. State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Weiss, and I live at 1933 Bridgecrest Crossing in Tall Bridge, right up the way here.
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanna ditto everyone with their statistics, 'cause I'm here really on a personal note.
Okay.
Um, a couple of years ago, I gave birth to a baby who's very, very sick, and she fought for her life for six months, and she's doing well now, but now she suffers with COPD and a lot of respiratory problems. And every day, we walk down Freedens Road, past the transfer site, that's, could possibly be one, and we go to the Katy Trail, and, you know, it's great, and I love it, because she can breathe that air, but if they were to put that in there, we would be quarantined to our home. I've lived in Maryland Heights prior to St. Charles, and I was nowhere near as close to landfill as I will be to the transfer station, and the stench was unreal. And it happened, you know, some days was worse than others, and some months were, you know, time of the year was worse than other times, but it was awful, and I don't feel like anybody's addressing the whole, you know, what's gonna happen to all of us breathing this in on a daily basis, you know, and not only that, but of course, property value. Also, I think that we need to have a better plan. You know, I know in Maryland Heights, a lot of the people in the 63043 zip code, they've, they're finding rare cancers and other forms of, you know, horrible things that these people are living with, and what is the reason? Because there's a landfill and a runoff, and it takes a lot of years for this to happen, but it could happen in 63303, you know what I mean? I just, that's all. So, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Yes, sir, I saw you being sworn in. State your name, please.
David Cotton.
Hi, Dave.
At 1932 Crossbridge Court, about one mile from this venue in that direction.
Yes, sir.
In economics, there's a concept called externality. Essentially benefiting accrued by one at the cost to others who did not choose it. As we've heard tonight by several eloquent speakers beforehand, that cost to us will be the reduction of property values, and therefore property taxes. We can expect increased costs on our road structure, increased maintenance on our road structure, potential impacts on our sewer systems, as well as health impacts, and potential drop in revenue from our beloved state park next door. To put it another way, this isn't just a neighborhood cost, it is a financial imposition to the county. As we heard earlier, and I appreciate that we actually got to see the budget process earlier, something that we were all willfully blind to and let you guys deal with until the property taxes arrive. Traditional revenue streams are tightening. Other revenue streams are tightening. We're having to tighten our budget, our belts, and yet, this will impose a cost, a liability to the city and the council. So I would say this is an improvement we cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Hello, sir, state your name, please.
I'm Bill Neinhold, I live at 1150 Wedgewood, and I've been before with the council before. Appreciate all the work that you've done, volunteer time that you guys do, and the staff. And basically, in the mid-'70s, I was a leader in the annexation laws, and we changed a bunch of laws in the '70s to make it more equitable for the people when they got to vote on annexation. And yes, everybody had to sign, if you were building a house or putting up a commercial building, you had to volunteer to be annexed to the city of St. Charles if you wanted to use their water and their sewer. What was good in the '80s, good in the '90s, good in the 2000s, these people need to go to the city. Now, they're not the bad guys, because they're being paid hundred dollars, hundreds of dollars an hour to be here and do their work. I would do that, too. I'm opposed to the transfer station entirely for different reasons. First of all, I've sat down by the, by the fill, and Metro Fill are good neighbors. There's not much trash there, there's not much dirt on the street, there's not much noise, they have a trailer there, the staff are one, I think, they have an operator there to push the dirt, take care of things. I spent four 15-minute periods, one mid-morning, zero trucks went to the fill. Late morning, that was this morning, there was five trucks there. Today, or last week, in the afternoon, there was one truck, early afternoon, late in the afternoon, there was three trucks that came to dump. Now, I don't, I could not find out what they paid for this piece of property, what Mr. Roberts paid for the property or Metro Fill, but the way I understand it, it's been going on a long time. Now, I was with the Stop the Dump Committee, we raised thousands of dollars to stop the landfill there, and so, I'm familiar with this whole thing, and they're wrong. In '93, it filled with water. Now, it's higher now, but the water didn't just come over the top, the water came in from all, from the sides, too. So there is a hydrological relationship between the, between the quarry and the river. Now, just some calculations, those nine trucks at $55 apiece, and they work nine, nine hours a day, that would be 81 trucks per day dumping in the quarry. Now, that, it's a very small survey, it's just observations, really, but just if there was 81 trucks dumped in the landfill, that would be $4,400 a day. Now, they have one staff in the trailer, one operator. That amounts to $220,000 per year, and I think this goes back to 2003, maybe? I've heard all kinds of stories, and I spent two hours up at the county office trying to figure out when they started putting dirt in that hole and everything else, and couldn't get much headway. I don't understand the Recorder of Deeds office. But to me, the transfer station is another way of grooming the goose that lays the golden egg. It's a money grab. It doesn't make any difference, it could, it's a money grab. I think at $220,000 a year, that he's more than got his money back out of this project. Let's deny the zoning for the transfer station, turn it into a soccer field, use the arena parking lot for all the cars, go up north on a Saturday or Sunday and look at the cars around Elm Road and Mueller and all up there, there's not enough places to park, there's not enough fields for the kids to play ball, soccer on, so let's deny this, have the city of St. Charles annex it, and turn it into a soccer park. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Hello, sir, state your name, please.
My name is Raymond Schulte. I live at 1726 Beverly Drive, which is pretty close to the convention center.
Yes, sir.
And I have several, several comments I'd like to make. First one is, there's nothing in this proposal that I have seen that says it is gonna be above the 500-year flood, flood plain that we're going to be seeing in a few years after St. Louis County has built the Monarch Levy to that area, okay, to that level of river. And we're gonna see it, and as we're building more and more levees across St. Louis County for soccer fields and ice rinks and all the other stuff, we're gonna see it get worse, and there's gonna be more development over in St. Louis County, so they're gonna build the levees higher. So that means that St. Charles County's gonna get the blunt. Second, as any, in reading this application, I've seen nothing in there that said that there's a seismic study as to the, how much damage would be done by all the traffic of these trucks being set in there, vibration in and out. I think according to the proposal, probably 120-some trucks a day, I believe I read that today again, 1,000 tons of trash a day. That's a lot of, a lot of movement of, of ground, and I think eventually, maybe not the next five years, but the next 20 or 30 years, we're gonna see that bluff collapse, and all those homes are gonna go right down with it. We also have a senior citizens center there, our residents on Freedens Road, and as you all know, as we get older, we don't see as well, and we don't drive quite as well as we did, and so there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of potential traffic hazards there for senior citizens and for all the little children that run up and that play in those subdivisions. And there's nothing really that says how, how far into the future that this could impact the environment, and also, they say that they will accept no hazardous materials. Well, I see nothing in their proposal as how they propose to prohibit environmental hazardous material from being dumped into this transfer station. They're not gonna be measuring the trucks, or they're not gonna be checking every truck that comes in to see what kind of material they're hauling. Maybe they say, we won't allow it, but how are they gonna prevent it? I've seen nothing in that. Also, the county council in the past years, whether it's their infinite vision or position, or maybe an infantile position, that we've allowed developers to take and force businesses out of, out of business. The racetrack on 94 was forced out, simply because people moved in next door knowing the racetrack was there, but now we complain because of the noise. We've had farmers forced out of business because developers build homes next to the pig pens and the, and the farms, and they can't stand the smells. Why did they move there in the first place? And the last, as, as I said, I live close to the convention center, and we were told back when the convention center was built, that we weren't gonna have a traffic problem or a parking problem, and every day that there's a large meeting going on, and this past Wednesday, we had traffic, traffic all up and down Beverly Drive, where people couldn't get in the parking lots, and we're overloaded with traffic on our street, and there's no place for people to park their own cars when they come and go. We have all this traffic, some of them sit there for seven or eight hours a day, especially when we have these women's survival programs that we have up there. And that is just a constant, constant aggravation to the residents on our street. So what we've been told in the past is not really what happens. Everything changes, and you can't control it once you let, turn it loose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. I like that, you asked that question yourself. You're on your own on that women's survival comment, though, brother. Yes, sir, you have been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, what is your name for the record?
My name is John Elick, I live at 107 Prowley Lane.
Hello, John.
Homeowner, homeowner in St. Charles for a long period of time. I was here during the '93 flood. I can guarantee you, it will flood in the future. That doesn't seem to be on everybody's mind that's planning this deal, but I saw the water, I know it exists, and it will come again, because everybody on the other side of the river is making more and more and more opportunities, they're racing all the flood plain, all the levees, but sooner or later, the water's gonna come here. The other thing I can say is, I'd like to say ditto for everything that people have said, and I would also like to say, and I'm sorry to, to point out to you, Mr. White, I'm really sorry that you would be a proposal of this bill. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
Just for the record, it is custom in the council for the councilman whose district this particular proposal's in to have his name on the bill. That's happens in my district and every councilmember's district, so Mr. White's name is on the bill because this is in his district.
Thank you for making that clarification. Yes, ma'am, have you been sworn in? Excellent, please state your name for the record.
My name's Andrea Keaton, I live at 476 Old Court Road, I live in Montclair subdivision, just up the hill.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a trustee in the neighborhood, and everyone in my neighborhood is opposed to it, 119 homes with values up to $475,000. So our concern, or my personal concerns, beyond all of those that everyone has expressed here, are, I'm one of those people that gets out and uses the streets, the sidewalks, the trails on a regular basis. I recognize a lot of people here today who walk their dogs with me, I've made a lot of friends from it. So those are some of our concerns, just on a quality of life type of aesthetic on a daily basis. I can tell you that currently, I am racing, literally with my dog, I start to enter the sub, intersection in Freedens Road on a daily basis to try to go over to Tall Bridge in the morning, and I often have to run across, or I have to back up and start over again. There's already quite a bit of traffic racing on that street every day. I also take trash bags down that road on a regular basis and pick up all of the trash that gets blown out of all the trucks and people tossing, but I think a lot of it is blown out of trucks, because some of it is some really large material, and I often have to call the city and say, can you pick up that lumber, can you pick up this, can you pick up that? Some of it sits there for months and months and months and doesn't get picked up. I've tried walking to Webster Park, and about got killed on Arena Parkway, there are no sidewalks, tried to walk with my husband, my dog, you know, so we've, we've tried to do the Katy Trail and then cut across from Arena Parkway to go into Webster. My point is that it's very important to the people in this area that they're able to go out and talk to their neighbors, ride their bikes, walk their dogs, enjoy their community. When I moved here 13 years ago- a professor at University of Ralla, because I was concerned about the quarry. I was concerned about the blasting. Is it going to crack my walls or my driveway? And I was told that the quarry blasting should be the least of my concerns because the blasting was well within the limits, the restrictions. But the professor at Ralla told me, he said, "Your biggest complaint is going to be the beep-beep-beeping of the trucks as they back up." And I don't think unless you live in this area, you realize how much sound carries. We can hear every concert at Riverport, identify the song they're playing, identify the band that's playing. I know Mr. Kymon lives in my neighborhood, and I remember when we first moved in the neighborhood, he was walking around with a flashlight one night between houses because he thought there was a party or something going on. And I said, "Actually, that's Riverport you're hearing." You can hear these sounds regularly. If I'm in Tall Bridge, way across at the end of Tall Bridge, I can hear the beep-beep-beeping of the trucks in the quarry in the morning. So my concern about getting three-hundred-and-thirty of these trucks a day with beep-beep-beeping constantly is a real concern. And I also think unless you live in the area, you don't realize that there's no such thing as a prevailing wind. It's like a whirling dervish there all the time. And on trash day, all of the trash lids open, all of the trash comes out of those forty and fifty-gallon containers and blows down the street, and whoever that house is at the end of the cul-de-sac is getting hit hard. I've seen umbrellas, I've seen people's pools, I've seen their siding, I've seen all kinds of things in the time that I've lived there. So I don't think there's any such thing as being able to contain anything. And I know that he's talking, these developers are talking about putting screens of trees and bushes and turning a building doors opening a certain way so that we can't smell it, we can't see it, we can't whatever. But in my opinion, as someone who really uses this area and loves living here and is so proud of all the developments that's taken place so far, I feel like it's lipstick on a pig. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Elman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cronin gave a good explanation why Mr. White's name is on there. Would you also explain why Michael Harbert is on there as well? He's the Director of Community Development, and anyone who applies has the right to come in front of you, and it's up to that department to send it forward to the council. And, and of course, it's the tradition that when we send it to the council, whoever's district it is in, that's who sponsors it. Doesn't indicate they're for it or against it, they're going to listen like everybody else.
Right. So Mr. Harbert is the department head, would be the one who's on there, and Mr. White, because it's in his district, he would, his name would be on there?
Right.
That does not imply anyone is for or against anything at this point?
Absolutely.
Very well. Next. And your name is?
My name's Kathleen Michael. I live at eighteen-oh-one Summit View Drive in the Summit subdivision, which is off of Freedens Road.
Yes, ma'am.
We've lived in that subdivision a little over twenty years, and about twenty-two years in St. Charles. We love living out here. Our backyard is our paradise. And in the summer or the warm weather, when the wind comes from the south, it's going to come that way. And for all one-hundred-and-twenty homes that live in our subdivision, many of us, we love the outdoors, we love enjoying our subdivision, and it's not going to be enjoyable with the smell. And I can say, I worked at Riverport for eleven years, and that smell from there would get into the building. I worked at Express Scripps, and that smell wouldn't leave. It was terrible. And the new outlet mall in St. Peters, I mean, I loved to shop, and I was there when it was stinky, and I couldn't even go in a second store. It was so bad, people were covering their mouths with their clothes and just going from the store to their car. That's just insane. So for one, I don't want that in my backyard. I'm not a business owner, I'm just a resident, and I think that if people don't comply, they're just going to get a fine slapped on them, and that's not going to do anything about the smell or the trucks or everything everyone else has said. Ditto to all of it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Yes, sir. I see you're being sworn in. So if you would, please state your name.
My name's Bob Jacoby. I live in the Summit subdivision. I'd like to invite all of you to visit a transfer station where I used to work by. There's one off of Hall Street in Humboldt. It's the City of St. Louis Transfer Station, and I, it is fenced, and I worked at the rail yard down there, which we switched boxcars for twelve hours shifts by this transfer station. I can guarantee there's always a smell of garbage. I guarantee that there is always trash that escapes the station, that is in the fences, and when they open the gates in the morning, it blows out of the fences and down toward the rail yard. We have called them. Yes, they do have a man that comes around with a stick and a, and a bucket, but he can't keep up with it. For eight hours, he does it. And I don't know if you've ever done stick work in a bucket. You don't work hard on it. You just put your time in. On a day like today, where the winds got excessive, it has trash in the trees down there, and the smell never goes away. The eight o'clock in the morning, when the eighteen-wheelers pull in there to get their loads, they're stacked up, they got their tarps unrolled, they're waiting, they're idling, making noise, and they make trip after trip as fast as they can. And as you know, the residue stays in that truck, and the winds blow that stuff out. Potato chip bags all over the place. Anything that's light blows out. The inloader, it's not a closed building. That inloader goes up a ramp, comes out of that ramp with stuff on its wheels, and then you got the garbage trucks coming in another side, and they're dumping and sloshing. I invite you all to go down to two-ten Humboldt near St. Louis and spend eight hours a week enjoying the smell and the trash and the noise. And I'm against it. I think a lot of people in our subdivision's against this, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Next speaker.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. I live in O'Fallon, but this really affects our entire county and our region as an environmental impact. This transfer station is the entrance and the front door to our county. We have a first-class county, and this is our first impression. It is your responsibility as the county council to protect all of our four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand residents. I have some questions about the environmental impact study, the report, the effect on the neighborhoods, the effect on property values, and the effect on property values for all of St. Charles County. The land impact study, where is a real traffic study that is made public and is transparent and open for each and every resident to digest, read, and comprehend? I have not been able to find that traffic study. The drainage, leach egg, and runoff collection system, the quality of water, the filtering system to be used, the noise, wear and tear on our capital improvements, our roads, our infrastructures, the air pollution control, but most importantly, the health of all of our county residents, and especially the residents that abut this transfer station. I'd like to hear from our public health director herself and her public testimony. I'd like to hear her impact that this transfer station will have on our community and our county. I'd like to see the county's plan for policing enforcement from the County Department of Public Health, Division of Landfills, and the Environment. Where is that division manager? I'd like to hear from that division manager tonight. We have current undercapacity and potential growth of current transfer stations currently located in St. Charles County. The city of O'Fallon has a transfer station located off Hoff Road, which is off of West Terra Lane. It is, has capacity for two additional bays when that capacity comes online in the future, and is run through a contract through Republic Services. We've all heard about them and all the lawsuits across the country. Second transfer station is the city of St. Peters that has growth ability and capacity for many generations to come, that is run by Christian Disposal and the Fred Weber Landfill in Maryland Heights, in a joint cooperative corporation. Thirdly is the city of Forestelle, at the county line with Warren County, is run by Waste Management. That transfer, that transfer station has potential of at least two or three bays for any future, future growth and capacity. And finally, the city of Bridston has two transfer stations located on St. Charles Rock Road in Earth City, and we all know about those noxious smells and going past seventy in the Earth City area. Unbearable at times. So I ask that this county council save our county, save our reputation, save our property values, and let's save our residents' medical health issues. Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Please state your name.
My name is Mark Brown, four-seven-six Pearl Ridge Court, St. Charles.
Hi, Mr. Brown.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to say I know Mr. Martin is a very competent lawyer, and it seems to me tonight he was setting the stage for a lawsuit. And I would ask that the county council does not fall into this trap. He sat here and he said that this property was zoned for nothing else, and nothing else could go in there for the landfill. The Supreme Court, I'm sure everyone up here is aware of it, has, has said that you can't, it's called a land taking. You can't zone something where nobody else could go there. So what I would ask, because you're basically taking people's property, you don't let them do anything with it, it's basically a dead piece of property, I would ask that this council immediately change that zoning, put some type of conditional use permit, and allow other things to come into this facility, because otherwise, we're going to lose the lawsuit, and we're going to end up with a landfill here. So we need to take action on that immediately. The other thing that I wanted to address was, he spoke about, "Well, this is different than a landfill." You know, this is going to be a twenty-four-hour turnaround. Well, twenty-four hours, they put it in, they take it out, and in another twenty-four hours, it's filled up. So it's constantly filled. And he talked about it being above ground, and it's not like it's in a big hole. Well, above ground just makes it worse because the smell's going to get out more. And he said, "Well, it's indoors." But then doors are open all the time because there's constantly trucks coming in and out of them. At the planning zoning meeting, I brought a photograph. I didn't bring it tonight because they said only three people could speak, so I figured I wouldn't be one of them. But in that, it was a photograph that was taken by an O'Fallon councilman. And the street was just completely flooded, leading to that, with this trash and debris all over the place. And then he said, "Well, this is going to be much different than the O'Fallon landfill, but it's really going to be operated by the same people who just got, who lost their contract with O'Fallon, and that's why they need a new place that they can dump." Now, they got other places they can go to. They're currently got a deal made over in, in Bridston, I think, is where they're using it. But we don't need to trash up our city, but we do need to change that zoning, because if we don't, we're going to set up here, we're going to fight, we're going to say, "Oh, we're against it, we're against it." Oh, the courts made us let it go through, because it's zoned for that. So we need to immediately change that zoning. We need to immediately change it to where something else can go in there besides that so that we don't end up with a land taking on the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Brown, if it makes you feel any better, we all did see the planning and zoning meeting, so we could see your picture that you had there. So nothing lost. You didn't have to bring it tonight. We did get a chance to see it there. I'm sorry, sir. Your name is?
My name is John Siegel. I'm in District Seven. John White represents me.
John, you can bring that up if you want to. You don't have to. There you go.
Oh, okay.
Hey, it's movable. We're high-tech in St. Charles, man.
So, John, I'm just glad to see, hear that your name had to be on there, okay? And you didn't sponsor this. Okay, mine's a simple math problem. Okay, I heard there was a hundred, going to be a hundred-and-twenty trucks a day, approximately, okay? Operating approximately eight hours a day. Okay, sixty minutes in a, in a, you know, in an hour, that's four-hundred-and-eighty minutes. Hundred-and-twenty trucks. Every four minutes. I propose that's not going to be a closed building. It's got to be an open building because you can't get that many trucks through there and close that door and open the door. It'd be impossible. Okay? Then, on a more personal note, my son lives about half a mile with his wife and daughter, and if his house guy goes down and he loses his job or something like that, you know, he's not going to be able to sell his house because of this, he's going to have to move back in with me. One, one last note. The seven of you represent all of us.
Yes, sir.
I think we've given you ample reason why we don't want it there, and I think since you represent us, represent us properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Adam, I believe you are going to be our last speaker for the evening.
The cherry on the sundae.
Please state your name.
My name is Adam Schwadren, and I live at four-nineteen Angelique Place. I also own another home just on top of the hill on Moreau Terrace. So as you can imagine, I have two properties that are within a quarter-mile of this. So, Mr. County Executive, county councilmen, and county staff, good evening. I moved out to St. Charles in two thousand and seven from the Creve Court area. My wife and I chose to live in this particular area for a multitude of reasons. As Ralph Waldo Emerson once suggested, that this area is, quote, "The greatest crossroads the world ever saw." Even though the heyday of river travel has gone by the wayside, as you all are aware, St. Charles is still a highly desirable area to live in. This particular area on the eastern front of the county, as Mr. Deanoff said before me, is our front door to the east. A proposal of this particular nature does not belong on our front door. And as you have already heard, this project would be detrimental not only to the immediate surrounding property for future development, but would also negatively affect thousands of homeowners within the mile radius of the proposed location with lower property values. When the Planning and Zoning Commission staff recommended denial of the permit, we all could have stayed home and assumed that the committee would follow suit. Instead, we chose to show up nearly four hundred strong to the Planning and Zoning meeting. When the Planning and Zoning Committee voted nine to nothing against the proposal with one abstention, we could have declared the issue settled and assumed that you, the county council, would follow suit. Instead, as you can see, we chose to show up here this evening, to be heard and ensure that we will not roll over and let a project of this magnitude affect the community that we all have chosen to be a part of. What you have seen and heard here tonight are the people in one of the greatest forms of freedom, petitioning the government about an issue and declaring that they refuse to sit idly by while a project that would be damaging to their lives and property is proposed. So I urge the council to please listen to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission staff, the vote of the Planning and Zoning Committee members, and most importantly, to we, the people, and vote against the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Do you have a question for the speaker?
I just have a comment to address a previous comment or question that had to do with the use and the zoning of this, I should say, the zoning of this property. It is zoned, solid waste disposal district, but within that district, there are a number, I don't remember the exact number, but about ten different uses that are potential in this district. So if not a trash transfer station, there are other potential uses. I think all of those would require a conditional use permit. The other thing I would mention is that a trash transfer station could be allowed in the light industrial district or the heavy industrial district in unincorporated St. Charles County. Both would require a conditional use permit. So this is not the only location in unincorporated county where a trash transfer station could potentially locate.
Okay. Mr. Martin, do you gentlemen have any final statements that you'd like to make?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I made some quick notes. I'll try and be brief again. There's a reference to the apartment buildings being built nearby. We did contact them about this project in advance. They've lodged no objections to this. You had several comments tonight about traffic, all right? The Arena Parkway was designed to handle this traffic. The traffic that comes to this, to this facility on a given event, whether or not it's a women's survival unit or not, the group that comes here far exceeds the amount of traffic that would be given in a week even by the facility we're talking about. The, the...
Mr. Martin, do you gentlemen have any final statements that you'd like to make?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I made some quick notes. I'll try and be brief again. There's a reference to the apartment buildings being built nearby. We did contact them about this project in advance. They've lodged no objections to this. You had several comments tonight about traffic, all right? The Arena Parkway was designed to handle this traffic. The traffic that comes to this facility on a given event, whether or not it's a women's survival unit or not, the group that comes here far exceeds the amount of traffic that would be given in a week even by the facility we're talking about. The Arena Parkway was designed to handle traffic. Someone said there's no traffic study. They haven't been able to find it. We have submitted it. It's a public record. It's here, it's available for all to see. The traffic studies clearly indicates that this is well within the capacity. Indicated there was no seismic study? Yes, the traffic study was done. We've heard about the fact that it's not compatible with the residential facility. In the packet we submitted to you, we've indicated there are 54 operating trash transfer stations in this state. Of those 54 facilities, 21 of them are 500 feet or less from residential homes. So many of them are actually right next to a residential setup, and they operate incompatibility with those residential settings. That's almost half of all the transfer stations in this state. There was a discussion about the property itself. This is a very small parcel. It's too small to be used for a landfill. It doesn't have many other uses whatsoever, given the size that we have. There was a comment about not being able to connect to utilities. We want to comment that this is being designed to comply not only with the county requirements, but being designed to comply with all the state requirements. If for some reason a utility becomes an issue and it can't be connected, the facility can't be built, we will comply with all laws. We have to comply with the laws in order for it to be operational. The, we went back and I heard more comments about the flood. I represent to you, and I've given you the statistical numbers, okay, that this property, where this facility is going to be located, has not flooded. It is above the flood plain. And we have the actual numbers and engineering drawings presented to you in the packet as well. Yes, there was flooding in the adjoining quarries, there was flooding down the way. One person said it came in from the side. Yes, we know at the time the road that was there permitted the water to flow under it. But this property still did not go under. There was a specific question about what to do about leachate or other things that come out. This is an indoor facility. It's a facility that will handle everything inside. If something falls off or something leaks, it will be done on the concrete floor, and there's provisions being made to contain that. And in the event of there's just abnormal stormwater, heavy rains, whatever it may be, there's also stormwater detention being planned for this location as well. All these issues are being addressed. You heard comments about the fact that we should, you should protect the citizens. Please understand that that's also the job of DNR, it's also the job of other agencies that issue these permits. It's been pointed out to you, there's a three-step process. The day-to-day management, the actual operation of this facility is regulated by other permits and by other governmental agencies as well. They will be asking some of these same questions. But this facility is designed to operate efficiently without environmental concerns, being done in a building. And of course, if they fail to do that, they will no longer be in operation. So that would be my quick summary of some of those comments unless you had specific questions after listening to them.
Mr. Klinghammer.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I've had the pleasure of hearing this twice now and...
Lucky you.
Yeah. It was a, it's always enlightening. And we had a couple of questions after the planning and zoning meeting that were, I don't believe, fully answered. So I'm going to give the applicant another opportunity to maybe expand upon those answers a little bit more.
If I know it now, or I will provide it later.
Okay, very good. First off, there was a traffic study done that you've alluded to a couple of times. We had questions at Planning and Zoning about the number of trucks, where they're going to be coming, where they're going to be coming from, and where they're going to be going to. And I'm a little confused at how you were able to conduct an accurate traffic study when, at that time, you weren't able to tell us how many, where the trucks were going or where they were coming from. So if you could elaborate a little bit more about the traffic study and the validity of it, if you were unsure, or at that time anyway, about where they were coming and where they're going.
My, I might have Derek that because I think he can specify the actual license tollers.
Right, thank you, Councilman. The, in the traffic study, it did cite where the traffic was coming in from, how much would be on that specific road. What other, beyond that, we don't know yet. I mean, we don't. And we're not that far in, there's, they talked about a three-step process for this permit. There's actually also NPDS permit, there's Fire District permit, there's multiple...
We're concerned with our process here. Undoubtedly, there's other steps that you have to do, but we're concerned with our process here.
But in the traffic study, it cited the traffic that would, in the direction of the traffic on Arena Parkway. Where it comes into from there will be, you know, that's something that's determined down the road. It doesn't affect your flow. It will ultimately reduce the overall traffic flow in the county.
That's just hard to understand when you aren't able to tell us where they're coming from or really, we asked about how many. And it was, it was vague...
We did cite how many.
It was vague about if you can cite how many. You don't know where they're coming from, you don't know who the customers are actually going to be that use this facility. So how do you know how many they're going to be if you don't know what your customer base is? Or you're not sharing that with us?
Yeah, we can tell you that they're, we've directed that they come in on Arena Parkway. And so we know that.
Well, you don't know where they're coming from, so how do you know?
We know how many trucks come in, we know that they come in from there.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brazel.
Yes, sir. Besides this being a business proposal, what is the advantage to the citizens of St. Charles County to have this in their county?
As the county grows, having intermediate waste removal points is important. It's good for the health of the county overall. And I know people don't really want to hear that, but it's true. By virtue of the fact that we have relay points, that's why there are 50 some of them across the state of Missouri. 56, I think the number was cited at. Only 20 years ago, there were maybe just a handful. 30 years ago, I don't think there were, there was maybe one. I think University City was the first one put in. And it was put in there because it was hard to get waste out of that area. And it didn't make sense to have local trash trucks trying to haul into the community and then spending two, three, four hours trying to get to the landfill and then back into the community. It required twice as many trash trucks. And so that's the concept here. This is not a dump, it's not a landfill, never will be. This is, this isn't even a materials recovery facility. It's not a compost facility. It's a simple relay point.
So is a trash being hauled currently to Bridgeton? Where does it get hauled to? From wherever, to my Klinghammers' point, you're not certain where it's coming from, but from your hypothesis, where is it, where, would it be going to if this wasn't here?
The, most of the waste within the immediate region ends up going to the Champ landfill or the Republic Transfer Station that is located on the old Bridgeton landfill.
Where's the Champ?
Huh?
What's the first one?
Champ.
Where is that?
It's the Village of Champ. It's that nook that sits in 70 and 270 that is right, it's a corner out of Maryland Heights. It's actually its own entity.
So, so that's my point. So bringing all those trucks onto Arena Parkway, you're really just, otherwise you would go across the bridge and go right to Bridgeton there or go to the Champ spot location you're speaking of, right? So I don't understand why, if you're talking about more trucks on the road and that sort of thing, you're only saving, what, a mile?
There are other locations that they could go to, but those are, those are them. Those are some of them. But that's where I would say the majority of the traffic ends up.
Mr. Cronin.
Citing those two, I'm sorry, citing those two landfills, both of those landfills are northeast of the site. Would you can, would you not say that the traffic from this site, from this facility, would be heading north on Arena Parkway, getting on I-70 at Fifth Street, and then crossing the bridge over to either the Champ site or the Bridgeton landfill site?
Traffic leaving this facility?
Yes, sir.
No. No, I wouldn't. The, the, because the traffic leaving this facility will leave in transfer trailers. Transfer trailers enable the material to be transported rather than in a local trash truck where there are only limited places where it can go. In a transfer trailer, it can be hauled to more distant locations out of the region.
So it's either got to go north on Arena Parkway or south. Which do you anticipate those trucks going?
Traveling away from 70, yeah, south. Thank you.
South. And then if they're going to head over to St. Louis County, their landfills, they'll be going across the brand-new bridge that we just put in between us and Chesterfield, right?
If they go that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And there is a need process under the county health that will get in, more into that aspect of it.
Mr. Hammond.
I'm still not, I'm still not clear. Where are these trash trucks coming from? And where are, once they get here and the trash is compacted, where is the trash going? I'm still not clear on that.
Right. We cited in the, in the traffic study that everything will go onto Arena Parkway south. To and from, I think that to, or coming in, it can come in from basically any direction. It's wherever they're coming from. But the exit will go...
Hang on, folks. Hang on.
I think you're not understanding me or...
I am understanding you.
Where are the, where is the trash coming from that's going on Arena Parkway? Is this trash coming from St. Charles County? Is it coming from St. Louis County? And once it gets here, where's it going from there?
Potentially, it's coming from both. It's coming from local area waste vehicles, wherever they're picking up at. They're not picking up from a great distance, I can tell you that. And in terms of where they're going, I don't, I can't tell you exactly where they're going. We know that they're going south on Arena Parkway. That's what's been cited.
So I, hang on, folks. Come on, we've been really good so far. We're almost there. So I have a question. When we were watching Planning and Zoning meeting, I point to you because you were at Planning and Zoning meeting, so therefore you're my representation of that. Thank you. I need to have visuals from time to time. So you said when the question was asked at Planning and Zoning, who are your clients that are going to be using this facility? And at the time, you said, "We don't know," right?
That's right.
So I guess to all the questions that we're all kind of asking is, if you don't know who's going to use it, how can you say where it's coming from? To Mr. Brazel's point when he said, "How is this beneficial to St. Charles County?" Hang on, I'm not done asking. Let me ask before you answer. I feel you warming up, man, so hang on. So if that's the case, I find it really hard to conceptually understand how you would be able to tell me where this trash is coming from if you don't know who your clients are yet.
It's built to service the need of the area. So we do know generally where the waste comes in from. It's local routes, whether it be St. Louis County or St. Charles County.
Okay.
So that we can answer. On the outbound, it is, it is unlikely, I guess I would say. I mean, that it's going to go, you know, it's more than likely, once those, we know those transfer trailers are going to go south on Arena Parkway. That's the way we cited it in the study. There's only about one entity that's out there that wouldn't take the material that way, anyway.
Wouldn't take the material?
South.
South on Arena?
So, so I mean, it's actually a broader universe than that. So, and, and what we also stated at the last hearing is that, that, that the client has made it very clear that they will not contract with anybody who does not have a good record with Missouri Department of Natural Resources. So, I mean, and you can take that for what you will. I mean, that there's probably some entities that rules out.
Mr. Cronin.
You previously stated that the trucks would head south on Arena Parkway. Since there's no landfills in that part of St. Charles County, you're headed to St. Louis County. You're going to go, you're also going to impact Chesterfield because you're going to go by Chesterfield and the outlet malls. You're also then going to have to head north on Earth City Expressway, impacting Maryland Heights, okay? So this, this is not just a St. Charles County, this is a regional thing. The other thing is the, these large semis that are full of compacted trash. Will your company be operating these or will these be done by independent contractors? Okay?
Those are typically done by independent contractors, and there is a section in St. Charles County code, in the, in the health code, that deal with need and analyzing the questions you're asking. We're, we're just trying to work with the zoning issues here.
But follow me through here. So if one of these independent contractors happens to pull a semi, okay? And we've all been behind garbage trucks before, be it a semis or smaller ones, where you see fluids leaking out the back of them, okay? That's going to, we lose jurisdiction when it crosses that Chesterfield Bridge in the Missouri River. Then when it's coming through Chesterfield and it's going up the, up the Earth City Expressway, I mean, there's a potential impact those other communities that's beyond the control of this council, our health department, or anything in St. Charles County. Is that not, would that not be a correct statement?
There are jurisdictions that those trucks would pass through that do have control.
Thank you.
Mr. Klinghammers.
Who will actually operate the facility? You don't know?
We don't know that yet.
Who's going to design the facility?
Engine is the engineering company that's doing that work.
Did they do the facility in O'Fallon? Did they design the facility in O'Fallon?
Yes. Their precursor to them did, yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, they learn from some of the, of the issues that we've heard about within our community. All right, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Mr. White, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, it sounds like this enterprise is... It sounds to me like this enterprise is like, if we build it, they will come. Is that the concept?
Some, some background notes, just because you had asked that question. Missouri as a whole is the fourth-largest waste exporting state in the nation. We export one out of every three tons. If you go back to 1991, there were approximately 77 disposal landfills in this state for MSW. Today, there are maybe 16 active, and those disposal points have been replaced with transfer stations. So, I mean, it, for, especially for independent haulers, you know, if they either can't afford or don't want to go to one of the corporate facilities or municipal facilities, it, it, a facility like this really does suit a need. It keeps competition alive.
Mr. Brazel.
Robert, quick question. The, on Arena Parkway, what is the flood elevation for Arena Parkway? The number 470, I think, has come up.
I don't have my notes here with me now, but I can tell you that most of Arena Parkway is above the 100-year flood elevation, the so-called 100-year floodway fringe. Although, right at the intersection of Freedens and South River Road, that intersection is slightly below the 100-year flood elevation.
So the transfer station is a proposal, is it proposed to be at an equivalent elevation as Arena Parkway?
The elevation of the transfer station site itself is proposed to be above the 100-year flood elevation, although the driveway leading to it, parts of that is lower than the 100-year. So if they develop this, they really should raise the elevation of the driveway leading to this site.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So this is going to conclude the public comment portion of the hearing on this application. At this point, pursuant to county ordinance, the county council will not take up this item again until findings of fact and conclusions of law have been prepared. The council may be able to take this item up again for consideration and vote on it December 18th. However, it may not be ready to take up for vote for several meetings from now in 2018. Therefore, please watch for council meeting agendas to be published. We will make a very clear statement on the agenda when this application, Bill 4540, will be taken up for a vote. So to restate that again, the applicant has a few options that they can take at this step in the process as to what they want to do. There is an outside chance, if everybody stipulates, correct me if I'm wrong, if everybody stipulates... There is an outside chance, if everybody stipulates, correct me if I'm wrong, if everybody stipulates and they waive the hearing and our attorneys can get everything done, that we might get this done on December 18th. Is that correct? That's, everybody has to stipulate for the fast process to happen. Even then, getting it on the 18th, it's going to be a long shot. So that will be our last meeting this calendar year. If they opt to not stipulate and go to the administrative hearing, they have to set up the administrative hearing. That has to happen. Once that's done, then the statement of fact and conclusions of law has to be put together. Then we will get that. So let me introduce you all to a website I would love for you to go visit for a number of different things, but this is a great opportunity for you to go visit on a regular basis. Mary will appreciate the fact that I'm promoting the county website. That's where you're going to find county council agendas posted on the Friday before the county council meetings. Generally, we meet on the second and last Monday of every month, right? So if we don't get this on our agenda by December 18th, then it will be posted on one of those agendas. So you will be able to see on all those agendas when this is coming up. I would expect to see you all back here when this is ready to come back up for a final vote. So please keep your eye out, because I don't want you to say, "I didn't see it." I'm sending you to SCCMO.org. That's where it's going to be posted. It's going to be there the Friday before. Oh, and the county, the county phone number is on there, too. That is the county phone number. You can find that phone number on the county website.
I'm reminding people that I can be able to speak here.
Oh, yeah, just reminding you, this is the only time that we're doing the public speaking on it, right? So when it comes up again, we will not have another, another public comment on this. This is it. Is there anything else that I need to remind anybody of? Mr. Hazelwood.
Mr. Chairman, there will be what's called a contested case hearing on this in all likelihood. That's what I think you were talking about a minute ago.
With the administrative hearing?
So the, the, the audience may take an interest in that contested case hearing, and that will be...
Where would that be posted so they could see?
I would say the famous SCC...
SCCMO.org.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Is there anything else that we need to do on this? Jennifer, Joanne, are we good? All right. I know a lot of you are probably going to bail on this. Let me say a couple of things. First of all, I want to compliment this crowd who's here tonight. You guys have been fantastic. You've been very good. I, I saw the planning and zoning meeting. I know the audio was horrible at the planning and zoning meeting. We've tried to do better with audio so you guys could hear. Even John Bennett, all the way in the back, can you hear back there? All right, so you're going to be that way. Okay, thank you very much. But you guys have been great. You've been very respectful of all the speakers. You've been respectful of the applicant in going through the process. I appreciate you guys very much. We appreciate you very much. The other thing I would like to remind you is, like I said before, county council meetings happen this, and last Monday of every month. We never get a fraction of this type of a crowd at a county council meeting.
Kind of lonely.
It is, it gets kind of, sometimes we have county staff in the meeting, and that's about it. We can put 180 in our council chambers at any given time. So if you would ever like to come visit us when you don't have a trash transfer station that you're opposed to in your area, we would love to see you at any given time, and you're always welcome to come to a county council meeting. At that, we are going to conclude this portion of the conditional use permit. I know a lot of you are probably going to leave, so we're going to take five minutes to let people kind of clear out, because I have a feeling it's going to get loud here for just a minute. So we'll resume this meeting in five minutes. Thank you all for coming.
Somewhere in my collection, I have a video. Win that water. Top lip.
Mr. Brazel. Where's Mr. Cronin?
I know. Mike, on the CUP, we're supposed to pull up one off the table, right?
Yes, right now.
Okay.
All right, with that, we'll get the meeting started again. And that brings us up to conditional use permit. Bill number 4532, I require a motion to remove that from the table and make it as an active bill again.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The bill is back on the table. So would you please read Bill number 4532?
Bill number 4532, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 17-13, for a wholesale nursery and boat storage to Shannon L. Hines and Fallon Hines property owners.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is final vote, correct?
Yes, and Exhibit C is now avail, has been available and posted as such.
Excellent. Just to let audio know, we're all up and going right now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Good? Excellent. Just, guys, if I could ask you to lean into those mics a little bit, that'd be awesome. Any, yes, Mr. Brazel.
If you guys remember, this was a old highway department shed, and the applicants are wanted for boat storage and so forth, and it's been kind of used for that for a long, long time. And there wasn't one complaint on it, so I'm good with it, or nobody concerned, I should say, yeah.
Any other questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none?
An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 17-13, for a wholesale nursery and boat storage to Shannon L. Hines and Fallon Hines property owners. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlman?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4532 passes. With that, we will move on to public hearing. This is a hearing on the 2018 proposed St. Charles County government budget. Is there anyone to speak on the budget hearing tonight?
One speaker, Arnie Deanhoff, has filled out a card.
Is he speaking on this, or is he speaking on public comments?
Vote.
Oh, of course, Mr. Deanoff.
Of course. Thank you very much, members of the county council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. The county executive's report, in my opinion, was hogwash and incorrect information given to our county residents. The cost of government, we need to do much better. We need to be more cognizant in this fiscal year of taxpayer dollars. In my opinion, the administration, the county executive's offices spends a lot of fluff-fuff and unnecessary expenses on political patronage positions, unneeded administrative positions, and unneeded capital expenses. Our growing, our county is growing hugely, both residential and our commercial developments. We, as a county government and a county council, need to live within our own budget. We have, this year alone, 6,000 new residents this year in every, each and every year. We have property improvements and expansions countywide in every subdivision and every commercial district across the county. Our business is booming. We had a seven increase by the county assessor. Across the board was the average in property taxes, both commercially, which pays a higher level at 28%, and residential, which pays 18% on $100 assessed evaluation. The director of administration calculates the county budget to be $88,840,569. We currently have an estimated fund balance, as of January 1st, 2018, after all expenses Now we have a problem. We are spending more than what we're taking in. We have to cut the spending this fiscal year and not raise and put the burden on our 425,000 county residents. Here are some, some reasons why the spending of county government is out of control. First of all, do we actually need a $130,000 community development director to manage the three divisions of community development? I'm not sure what his duties and responsibilities are. I think there's managers and directors of each one of those divisions that are capable of running the community development department. This person was brought in from the city of O'Fallon, and his salary nearly doubled. The salary of the director of administration is of grave concern. Her current salary this fiscal year was $186,000 plus benefits and a state pension. If you give her a 2% pay raise, as you have in the budget, Mr. Schnarr proposed to give to county employees, that will bring her salary to $190,000. Just to put that in respe, in perspective, the director of administration of the state of Missouri, who had, who oversees 55,000 state employees, makes $128,000 and no county car and no perks. The governor of our state, Governor Greitens, makes a salary of $135,000 and oversees also the Department of Administration and several departments of state government, along with the state employees. This salary is off the charts, and the public needs to know. We have public information officers out the kazoo in our county government. You made a political patronage position last year in creating the director of communications for $100,000 salary plus benefits and perks and a pension. So we have a director, we have two managers of communications, we have a coordinator of the communications department, we have a TV producer who oversees seven television staff members, we have a public information officer for the police department, full-time, we have a public information officer for the prosecutor, full-time, we have a public information for, officer for the Department of Health, full-time, a public information marketing coordinator for the parks department, and a public information officer for the office of executive. That's a 30% jump in the budget from 2016 fiscal year. That budget jumped from $700,000 to over $1 million in 2018. These are making political patronage for some of Mr. Elman, the county executive's friends and foes, friends and relatives. We need to stop these patronage positions in our county government. The lack of transparency needs to come about with these figures, and I ask that the county council do what the state does and put these salaries and the information, including benefits and pension, on the line like the state of Missouri does. We have lobbyists, which we pay $75,000 apiece, one in Jefferson City and one to the East-West Gateway Coordinating Council. Mr. White, council member from District 7, is a member of the East-West Gateway Coordinating Council, voting member. Mr. Elman sits on the East-West Gateway Coordinating Council. This is a waste of taxpayer money. Our election authority has a budget fiscal account clerk. This person, in that current position, could not even pass the testing requirements several times at the Level 3 clerk position that was originally advertised. But because this was a political patronage position, she was put in at the Level 1, where she didn't have to take any testing procedures. There were no require, no testing requirements. This position needs to be eliminated totally and absorbed by the Department of Finance, which currently does a duplication of services. We need to leave our other elected officials alone, the full-time assessor, the full-time recorder of deeds, the full-time collector, prosecuting attorney, and the sheriff. You all heard them cry foul from giving them over $100,000 administrative fees and other type expenses, which was not fair under the rules of the 1% requirement. May I remind you that the collector brings in 10 times more than the actual expenses of her salary, staff, and equipment that she uses in one annual year. May I also bring your attention to several state statutes that said that you must at least approve last year's budget at a minimum for each of the other elected office holders, including any increase to employees for our cost-of-living wages. You will be setting our county up for a lawsuit from those executive office holders if you fail to cut their budget or charge them exorbitant fees and unwarranted costs. Our police and sheriff's vehicles, we have a full-time fleet department with two fleet managers. We have software that we just bought that tracks all the maintenance. We keep our cars in tip-top shape. We're getting rid of these cars at 60,000 miles, when they're really built to go about 200,000 miles because of all the extra requirements and all the extra wear and tear built in by Ford for police vehicles. Our parks department, you recently, in a closed session, spent $1 million on a house with six acres of three bedroom, or two bedrooms and three vases. And you're also purporting to let the woman live there for the rest of her life, and she's only about 70 years old.
Mr. Deanoff, with all due respect, can you please wrap up these comments?
I'm almost finished.
Thank you.
But there is a requirement in the charter that there's no time limit and also state statute.
I said please.
I want to make sure these get on the record. We have animal control vehicles that are being taken home for personal use. I brought that to the attention of the assistant director of administration and the director of administration. It's my understanding we didn't give them the proper tax forms and tax them as employees for the use, as those are wages. I also don't think it's, it's right, and I think it's wrong to our other county employees that follow the rules and regulations. Gasoline usage, we need to be accountable at the pumps. Those pumps don't have any accuracy... accountable at the pumps. Those pumps don't have any accuracy or any responsibility of documenting who's getting gas at the pumps downtown St. Charles and at our road and highway departments located throughout the county. We need to bring that in-house and make sure that there's accountability and that we're not giving out free gas. Promotions to buddies in our Department of Police, we promoted a captain all the way from a patrol officer, which was wrong, wrong for taxpayers, and wrong for our law enforcement. You have 30 lieutenants and sergeants that are very disappointed and mad, who have spent 15 to 20 years on the job in that position, and were passed over to give a buddy a promotion and double his salary. For those reasons, I ask that this county government, that we act like all other households in St. Charles County, that you pull up your bootstraps, that you live within your own budget, and like Mr. Cronin wants to do, which would be in jeopardy of a lawsuit, breaking our state constitution, filing the Hancock Amendment by raising taxes. Our county is growing, our population is growing, we are financially stable. You need to learn to live within your own means, like our households, and not raise taxes and put the burden back on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on the budget? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing on the county budget for 2018. We'll move on to public comments, but before we do that, Craig Fromm is here. Craig ran the meeting for planning and zoning. I just wanted to recognize you and say you did a fantastic job running that planning and zoning meeting, so I appreciate that. You set a good bar, so hopefully I came close to hitting what you did. So, nice job at that meeting. I just wanted to recognize you for that. So, yay. So, let's move on to public comments.
On Bill 4550, we have Ramona Schulte.
Ramona Schulte? Is Ramona here? I think Ramona meant to speak on the CUP.
All right, then on Bill 4541, we have Brad Wade.
Brad? Come on down. I'm sorry, the audience is not nearly as big as it was before. You don't have to be sworn in to speak during public comments. It's just during conditional use.
Hey, real quick, thanks for having us. My name's Brad Wade. I live on Forest Drive, where this proposed subdivision wants to go.
Yes, sir.
It's currently zoned, one house per two acres. We'd like to keep it that way, and it's also zoned agricultural, so we could have any light farm animal or a small, small farm of some kind. We'd like to keep it one house per two acres if we could, and I'm against it, the development.
So, you're against the development?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it. No vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes. Tom Gregerson?
Hey, Tom, come on up.
I'm gonna get you to that sofa pretty soon.
[laughing]
No, my name is Tom Gregerson. I live at 2,500 Forest, which is directly across the street from this proposed development.
Yes, sir.
Which I'm very much against. I was- lived in St. Charles County for about 17 years now, I guess, and when I- two years ago, I found the five acres on Forest available for building, and I just jumped at the chance, because it's such a unique area. It was developed in the 50s, and it's old. Forest itself is just barely wide enough for two cars to pass each other, no curbs, no sidewalks, or nothing. It's kind of a laid-back area. As far as God's creatures, I mean, I have deer feeding out in my backyard, animals like that, squirrels. I think we're actually the squirrel capital of St. Charles County. I know I have five nut trees, you know, in my yard, and they're out there all the time. But this developer did, not talking about the developer now, but except he did, he has a subdivision that went in that was zoned through O'Fallon. It's right up on the corner of Forest and Double D. And those houses are, I think his average lot is like $11,000. It couldn't be any less than 10, and they're jammed in there. They're just terrible. I mean, I'm against this particular zone. They've even dropped it down to 7,000, just because there's two houses that wouldn't fit. Well, why couldn't they just eliminate those two houses or build one house and stay with the 10,000 level? But that's not really what we want either. We want to leave it just the way it is. We're happy, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Uh, we have Thomas. Uh, this was- okay, that's you.
Hello, Thomas, come on up. Thomas, how do you say your last name?
Snezen. Thomas Snezen.
Hi, Thomas.
Uh, I'm one of the unfortunate ones. I didn't get a letter for the zoning application. I live one lot too far, I guess, and all the neighbors presumed I got one.
And you're speaking on Bill 4541 as well?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. I live on 2456, which is just down the road from it. My main concern is the traffic volume. It's a narrow road, but you've got the high school over there. We have kids coming through from a trailer park on Oak Drive, and Forest runs into it. And the night- of the morning, I almost hit kids. They walk two and three abreast, dark, probably closing. There's no streetlights, no sidewalks. And that school over there, we get all the traffic. They can't go north, because the two driveways intersect. They come in our subdivision and shoot up DD, and it's just a very unsafe situation for the traffic, and it's just gonna get worse. Like, two cars can barely pass, and if they have sidewalks or something else like that. But other than that, it's probably the oldest subdivision in St. Charles County. It's a lo- they originally started out with five-acre lots, 10-acre lots, and that. Some of them have been split to two and that, but when you get down, that's probably- that's 46 is probably almost as many houses as left in the house in this whole subdivision. You're gonna double the population on the road, is what you're gonna get, and that's- I'm very much against it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Danita Meyer?
Hi, Danita.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
I've been dealing with the same engineer and Ann Combe, the developer, the last year and a half. I'm speaking for my aunt, Nina Musgrave. She's 26074th, very first house on the left as soon as past the development. I've been told, I've sent letters, I've sent pictures, I've sent it to the county council. I spoke to Mr. Brazel quite a while ago. They did have a little meeting. They came together with O'Fallon, because they keep telling us, well, this is an O'Fallon development, and I reminded them that you guys represent my aunt. She is St. Charles County. We have had with this, and you're- and I kind of spoke at the planning, the zoning meeting, to kind of pre-warn you of what could happen to these folks that are gonna be next to this. She has been flooded out. Her basement has had water in it. They have elevated the land so high that the top of the houses that he is building is gonna be looking out at her roof. They put a drain pipe with their system that the overflow of the drain will come out slowly and it won't affect you, about seven foot from her backyard fence. She has not been able, this entire year, to use her clothesline in the backyard. She's 82 years old. We've lived in St. Charles County for 60 years. She's paid her taxes. It's her first house her and her husband were able to buy, to purchase. There's great neighbors around there. Now, I expressed, I used to mow the grass for my lady from the development. I- Mr. Woods, I would help him out, and Mr. Lane, these are all people in that area. I know the lay of the land. They first tried to tell me that there's a natural creek running through there. She's never had a natural creek running through her backyard. I can't- I have not mowed the grass for maybe six times this- since spring now, because her- even though it's- we had that dry spell, if you walked in her back, and I tried to put a lawnmower back there, we would sink. She can't use it. It's just- it's ridiculous what we're going through. I asked them, I've been fighting with them in O'Fallon City Hall, and the suggestion they had was, we will dig a ditch, throw some rock in it, put a pipe in it, and throw some rock back over it, but we're only gonna go right to the end of her house. Well, if they do that, then that leaves her whole rest of her field and her shed to be covered underwater. That's not a proper way to do it. We asked for it to be, the land should be back the way it was. There should be no effect to her land. So, we are fighting right now consistently, and we're still fighting, and I'm still gonna keep fighting for her, so she can use her backyard. Tonight, it's raining. I would love any one of you gentlemen to come out and take a walk in her backyard, anytime you'd like, and you can see the damage. You can see it's constantly wet, and it's not- she's just not able to use her backyard. It's not right, and you're getting ready to allow this same developer, which we have crash all over the place there, too. So, you're- I'm just warning you, this is the same developer and the same engineer that designed this, that is coming in and moving in on these people.
Thank you.
So, it's gonna be a problem.
Appreciate it. Your time has expired.
Uh, one last speaker is A.C. Deanoff.
Mr. Deanoff, third time's a charm.
Mr. Chairman, these are important issues that we're talking about that affect our entire county, so I don't take that very lightly, your comment.
You're welcome.
Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident, looking after all 425,000 residents and not my own pocket. Tonight was unfortunate, a public hearing at the police station from the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. It's a for-profit agency, and what a joke. We, as county taxpayers, had to pay a fee of $16,185 to look for accreditation. We had to pay the people visiting us $5,500 in paying them a payment for their salary and their hotel expense. We also have to pay $80,000 in a full-time Kalia manager for his salary benefits and pension. Ridiculous. Last week, the passage of the creation of a new police position, of a statistician. Why can't our 70,000 public information officer at the police department, who babysits Facebook with few and far between posts, take that role on? Our county unincorporated population is 98,000. O'Fallon city population is 97,000. They have a half-time public information officer and a half-time crime statistician, plotting the crime map, so that person is a full-time position. So, we need to be cognizant of taxpayer dollars. The other thing is, the University of Missouri Extension Council, that's in an ordinance forum before you tonight for first reading, is $100,000 enough, and is that the fair share for our 425,000 county residents? There's a bill on the table for, uh, what am I gonna say here? We've invested $8 million in the Green Light Program. We need to scrutinize and tighten up these contracts, so we don't have any overruns, but there's gonna be an overrun of $20,470 on that program. Lobbying services, we have proposed to pay in an ordinance $75,000 through Jefferson City lobbyist, $75,000 in East-West Gateway coordinating lobbyist. Steve Elman is on that board, along with John White. Why do we need these positions, along with paying all their expenses, hotels, and meals? We have a chief of staff in the executive's office and a half-time assistant director of administration that looks only at state legislative issues. So, I ask that you vote no on Bill 4551. And finally, Bill number 4552, which will be introduced by Mr. Elman and Mr. Ehlum, looking to establish the operation of a regional medical examiner program. There's been zero discussion at the county council, zero details, and no debate. You're talking about a $1.5 million project here. Where are we gonna come up with the money to pay for it? Our county's share, just for the operational expenses, are $168,000.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff. Your time has expired.
So, I ask that you look at it and discuss the debate. Thank you very much.
I appreciate you taking the opportunity to inform us of these important issues in our community. Move on to the oral report from the county executive.
None this evening.
Thank you for your 10-minute presentation earlier tonight. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. That brings us on to bills for introduction. Just a reminder, for those who did not know, there's been no discussion on these bills to this point, because these are bills for introduction, meaning this is the first time they've been brought before us. We will start with Bill number 4541.
Bill number 4541, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Jill Brazel. An ordinance permitting the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1E, single-family residential district, as per application, RZ 17-13.
Are there any questions or comments about Bill 4541? Mr. Brazel?
Uh, yes. Robert, or Mike, or whoever.
Either one.
I think you're both gonna come up here for a minute. Robert, are these county roads that they- they would- these would be county roads that they would have to drive on in order to get to the subdivision, this new proposed subdivision?
Yes, that's true.
And these roads are, they're pretty small, aren't they? They're not really up to- are they up to county standards?
Summers Road, to my knowledge, is Forest Road, which is internal to the subdivision, Weldon Springs Gardens Edition. That subdivision was developed in 1950. That was before our subdivision regulations and zoning, and I would say it's not up to the current standards today, no.
So, what is the proposal? What road would they be coming off of?
Uh, the proposal is, what you have before you today is, tonight, is a rezoning, but there's a related plat that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved contingent upon the rezoning. And so, the developer's proposing to connect both the Summers Road and the Forest, but not a straight shot. It's basically, there's several turns within the subdivision, so there wouldn't be a straight connection between the two.
So, the size, the size of lots that they're proposing are, what, seven to 10,000 or 10,000 square feet, or what are the proposed lots?
They would average 10,000 square feet, although the zoning can technically allow as small as 7,500. They submitted a plat at the same time. That would lock them into 10,000 square foot average lots.
And what are the, the current lots in there now, or two to five acres, or something like that?
Uh, within this block, the lots average, or range from about two and a half acres in size, about five acres. The zoning is agricultural, so it's a minimum lot size of five acres, if this had been platted today, but it, again, it predates the zoning.
So, Mike, you- I do remember this now, and I did talk to you several times, and I- Mike, you talked to him. He was new when he just, when this problem arrived, he was fairly new to-
Still going on.
Yeah. Um, the problem with the water is they're dumping a bunch of water with this new subdivision on these old subdivision lots, and I remember you wrote a really nice report on it, but basically, we're not getting anywhere, 'cause it's O'Fallon versus St. Charles County kind of thing, or, I mean, we have no control, kind of, if that, is that where we are with this one?
That's correct. The, the situation is that, because it was developed in the city of O'Fallon, we received a complaint from the property owners and their family, and so what we did was, we tried to get a meeting together with them and the city of O'Fallon. We were able to do that, and we're trying to get some remedies to, to their concerns, and one of those was to get the developer to put in a French drain system in their yard that would take that water out. That's something that, I know there've been, there's been conversations going back and forth, but in the end, it's something that we cannot force the developer to do that. We can't force the city to, to do anything beyond what they're, they're doing. We're asking them to help the residents, but that's where it's at.
So, so is the developer made any kind of attempt to correct the water problem on-
I'm hearing no.
Um, I, I have a problem with this. Is it develop- is it, is the applicant here, by any chance? Um, this, this passed planning and zoning, but it was a very close, close vote, right, Mike?
Six to four.
Yeah.
Or is the water going over there?
Wow, that's a lot of, a lot of questions to be. I, if we had something not too- Robert, we had a something before us not too long ago, where we, in this very same vicinity, where we voted down, the council voted down because of the roads out there. Was that an apartment complex or something? I can't remember.
There were two projects on Circle Drive, which is at the end of this subdivision, the north end, and the request was to replat an existing lot to create another two lots, but the access to those two lots was, it wasn't elevated above the 100-year flood zone, so there was concern that it'd be creating lots where you couldn't get to in case of emergency, like, or in case of a flood. This property doesn't have that same problem. Forest Drive doesn't have a section that's underneath the 100-year flood zone.
Who handles the sewage on, on something like this?
Uh, the sanitary district. I can find that for you. Now, the sanitary district, I can find that.
I just, I just, I, I, here's the problem. What we have here as a council is, let's say we deny this, whether or not, I don't know what they're going to do, but if we deny it, I don't know what's going to stop him from annexing into O'Fallon. I'm just telling you. I mean, so, I think the lots that they're proposing are too small. If, if you're going to, if the, if the subdivision, the unincorporated subdivision was going to stay as is, and they're trying to incorporate it into that subdivision, the lots don't, even if they're not consistent at all. We don't, we typically, this boy does not do that. If it's agricultural zoning and it's a two to five acre lots, we don't ever mix and match subdivision lots within suburban lots. And so I'm opposed to the subdivision, but I'm telling you folks, whether or not what the council chooses for this or not, I don't know, he could, he could annex into O'Fallon, but he has to have, what is that, Joanne, 25%? 25% on the annexation law? Is it 25%?
Fifteen.
On, no, it doesn't matter.
Are you asking about contiguous?
Yeah, contiguous, contiguous has to be 25%, doesn't it?
Well, that's if it's, if it's under either the, oh, sorry. If it's under either the involuntary or a 1-4, which goes by that same standard, you've got to have 15%.
15% for voluntary?
Of a county, right, of a common line.
That would be close, I don't know. So 15% or more of the property line touches unincorporated, uh, O'Fallon, the applicant could annex it into O'Fallon, and then get the zoning into O'Fallon, given them in the, in the past.
Like, throw the road?
No, if it goes in O'Fallon, it goes in O'Fallon.
Do you think O'Fallon's being dropped?
I, I can talk to you guys about it later, but I'm just telling you that's...
No, I'm just curious, because if they open that road up, the doors are so small, if they widen that road, 100,000 houses, they'll open your road. So I'm just curious if you guys can...
Now, now, what, I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'm...
You'll have a conversation, but, Mr. Cronin.
I think the motive of the developer here is to try to get us to approve 7,000 square foot lots, when the adjacent subdivision that apparently has the runoff problem is a 10,000 square foot, okay? So he's thinking he can get possibly lower lot sizes with the county than he would the city of O'Fallon. This property is contiguous, you know, the boundary, one's boundary is contiguous with O'Fallon. Summers Road is an O'Fallon roadway, so I would caution you to be careful what you ask for here, because, while I don't like the idea of 7,000 lots, and I live in the country and I don't like it any more than you folks would be, I think if this is turned down, then that developer will likely go to O'Fallon. Robert, you're looking, if you look at this, and Mike, you probably know too, if you look at the actual map of this, where it shows the O'Fallon subdivision, okay? This should be nothing to keep this property from being annexed into O'Fallon, under law, is there? You've got a pretty, pretty large shared boundary.
I mean, we, we didn't measure the contiguous.
Yeah. By the looks of it, I wouldn't think there's an issue, would you?
I'm not certain if that's 15% or not.
Yeah.
It very well could be.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know the solution here, but, you know, I, I think what we probably need to find out, if, if we're the only game in town for this development, and then not possibly not be an opportunity to work with them to get something that's better than an O'Fallon subdivision, okay? But then, then, but all...
There's nothing you can do to help her out about what we've done.
Do me a favor, if you're going to talk, can you come up here? The audio guy right now is losing his mind every time you yell.
I'm so sorry. Is there just not, nothing we're supposed to be able to do to, for you guys to help her out, since she's St. Charles County, from getting flooded? I mean, is it just kind of where...
Well, it's, 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 we, we, Mike, uh...
I mean, I know he recommended it, but what he offered, he has not offered anything.
We're county government, that's city. We, he went out there, tried to work something out with them, but we, they don't have to listen to what we tell them, because it's, it's, it's a dividing line between, it's got O'Fallon city and it's unincorporated county, and, and the developer, to be quite frankly, the developer's not very cooperative. I mean, why would we want to move another subdivision in our county? Because they, this woman has been trying to get something done for a year, and nothing happens, and just out of goodwill, you would try to help them out, but she, he hasn't. So I'm not in favor of the subdivision at all, and, um, sure.
You're not really going to like this, but it, it sounds to me like it's a civil issue.
I know, I'm going to have to get a lawyer, but I just kept thinking that, you know, you guys represent St. Charles County, and I thought maybe the flow of the land and the water and what they're doing to her and the other people...
I'd love nothing better to ride in on a, on a silver horse and, and, and...
No, but I assumed that the flow of the land and people getting flooded would have been, you know, and with the sewer system, with this drain water systems, I thought maybe you guys might have helped out, but I understand.
I wish we had, I wish I had that bull in my, in my arsenal. I, I don't think that we do.
Well, get with the program.
You're not the first person to say that. Mr. Hammond, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm concerned that if, if we push this off on O'Fallon, they're going to probably have less, less say-so in, in the development than what the county currently has requirements, and I, I, I can't vote against it. If, if I think it's going in O'Fallon, it may do even cause more grief than if it developed in the county.
Mr. Cronin.
I think we need a definitive answer from the attorneys and from our staff, whether this, this piece of property could be legally annexed in the city of O'Fallon, okay? Not tonight, but before we have to vote on this.
Excellent. Any good questions or comments on this issue?
I, I suppose, though, of what some of you folks are suggesting, if we, if we want to work with him, and we say, we'll consider it, but we're not going to do 7,000 square foot lots, we'd have to deny it, right, Mike? Or we deny it, and he has to come back to reapply. We can't tell him that he has to have 10 or 15...
I think there's more questions than answers at this point. It's probably better to work on this, not, not from the dice.
Oh, I got you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. You made it through that whole conditional use. You deserve the right to speak again.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike, we understood that this is just zoning, is all we're talking about tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's another phase of this where we talk more about...
Site plan.
How incompetent we think he is and things like that. That's, correct? I mean, there'll be another chance besides that if you...
There's two readings, yes.
There's two readings for it. You mean for us to vote?
Well, no.
Or you mean after, after, say we approved it, there would be another...
I think Planning and Zoning, Senator Beck said there was conditions he had to meet before that part of it, that we'd have another chance, another chance to talk after that. But, you know, we still don't want you to even pass it, quite frankly, but I just want to make sure, because there's things about the builder that I have a lot of questions about, and I didn't want to bring them up here, if all we're talking about zoning.
Sure.
About how he, so that's why, I'm making sure we have a chance to talk again if you do pass this thing.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I think it was referring to is, is conditions that could be placed on site plan approval, okay?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, yes.
In this case, we're talking about a subdivision plat, so the, a plat has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they approved it conditional on this rezoning. So if this rezoning is not approved, no plat can be signed. I guess that's the bottom line.
So the bottom line on this would be, if we, if we don't like this and want them to go back and redo it, to Mr. Brazel's point, and have them do different sized plots, then we would have to deny it and force them to go back and start over again, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, folks, for coming. We'll move on to Bill Number 4542.
Bill Number 4542, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2018 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4543.
Bill Number 4543, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2018 through 2020 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Mr. Cronin.
There are four of these projects that are in my district and affect, and/or affect my district, and there's a little bit of information that I think that, that needs to come forth, so if anyone would like to meet with the O'Fallon or Wentzville staff to discuss some of the particulars of this transportation plan, please let me know, because I'll be meeting with them to talk about it, okay?
Very well. Any other questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4544.
Bill Number 4544, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance approving a first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wentzville for West Meyer Road, Phase Three.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4545.
Bill Number 4545, requested by Ruth Rollins, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance amending sections 115.240, 115.420, 115.580, 115.670, 115.710, 115.720, 115.721, and 115.722 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Any questions or comments on 4545? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4546.
Bill Number 4546, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute two professional service agreements between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent, and Angie G. Danas as an independent contractor, and Sarah Kopanol as an independent contractor.
Any questions or comments on 4546? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4547.
And this is less than three pages, so I'll read the whole bill. Bill Number 4547, requested by Christine Ramsdale, sponsored by Jill Cronin, and ordinance granting a water meter access easement over property owned by the county of St. Charles, Missouri, to the city of O'Fallon, its successors, assigns, licensees, and agents for the provision of water services to the emergency operations center. Whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article II, Section 2.502, authorizes the county council to exercise any and all non-legislative powers under applicable law, and whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article II, Section 2.518, and Chapter 49.280, RSMO, grant the council power to dispose of any real estate belonging to the county. And whereas the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, will provide water to the St. Charles County Emergency Operations Center located at 1400 TR Hughes Boulevard, O'Fallon, Missouri, and whereas the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, requests a water meter access easement for placement of a water distribution line, and whereas granting of this easement will benefit St. Charles County and will serve a public purpose. Now therefore be it ordained by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the county council hereby grants to the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, an easement on property described in the water meter access easement, as attached here too, as Exhibit A. Section two, the county executive is hereby authorized to execute any documents needed to complete the grant of the easement and to record the easement deed with the St. Charles County Recorder of Deeds. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4547? Seeing none, let's move on to Bill 4548, for those who are still the faithful that are sticking with us.
Bill Number 4548, requested by Jeff Smith, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, and ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol, allowing the placement of an antenna and other tunnel communications equipment at a tower site in Weldon Springs.
Mr. Cronin.
I would like the young man that's, that's filling in for Jeff Smith to stand up, because I'd like to thank him for sitting through this whole meeting for a bill that's a really good deal for the county, because it's free and enhances our public safety. So thank you, sir. My hat's off to you for sitting there at the whole meeting.
I think Jeff Smith owes you lunch, but that's just me.
And, and Jeff is doing well, so...
Excellent. Any questions or comments beyond that? All right. Bill Number 4549.
Bill Number 4549, requested by Simon Wall, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the city of St. Charles, Missouri, and St. Charles County, Missouri, for network access.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4550.
Bill Number 4550, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by John White, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000.
Any questions or comments on 4550? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4551.
Bill Number 4551, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4552.
Bill Number 4552, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, and ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles, Jefferson, and Franklin Counties for the purpose of establishing and operation of a regional medical examiner program and further authorizing contracts with necessary services for the operation of such office.
Any questions or comments about 4552? Seeing none, that concludes bills for introduction. Any action to be tabled on our table bill? Seeing none, that moves on to announcements and miscellaneous. Anyone have anything to add this evening?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous.
I want to compliment all those who set this meeting up. I mean, it's incredible. Look at the technology that went into this. It's amazing. For our first road show, I think it's a big success.
I would like to second that, Mr. White. I think this has been fantastic. I, I love these monitors that we have at the Family Arena. Perhaps I should never be on a screen that big ever again. A little too life-size for me, but this is gorgeous. So hats off to Greg and the arena staff. Fantastic job for accommodating this tonight. We appreciate it very much. I, I would love to have more meetings at the Family Arena, especially if we could get half the community to show up like they did tonight. We've had events here that didn't have this many people show up, so that was pretty awesome. I also think this is the first time we've ever had a county council meeting go long enough to where we've actually made the live shot on TV. Hey, how about that? It's nice when the reporter throws her hands up when you can make reference. That's pretty nice.
I also think it's time to go home.
All right, so that would require a motion.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn is moved.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? You're crazy. We're out of here. Thank you. Good night.
Sure.
Good job.
Woo. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I have one.